Good evening and welcome to the July 18, 2018 meeting of the Milton School Committee. As is our tradition, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. So I have one minor change to the agenda. I'm going to move item 5C to item 5A. And other than that, I have no changes to the agenda.
Does that mean that A will be C?
That means, no, that means A will be B and B will be C.
Okay.
And C will be A.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And, yeah. All right. So I see this evening we have a number of guests, which is wonderful. We're going to start with our citizen speak portion of the meeting. So the citizen speak portion of the meeting is designed for citizens to come in and give us their thoughts on a wide variety of topics. However, it is, we are prevented from engaging in a dialogue on those topics. It is, in many ways, designed for the public to offer us constructive criticism or detailed thoughts on any, any number of subjects that come into their mind. So if, if there are individuals here who would like to speak to something that is not our space issue, this would be the venue for you to do that. If you are here to speak about our elementary space issue, then that would be the next item on the agenda. So, seeing no takers, we'll move to item four on the agenda, which is our public forum on our, on our space. So this is designed for us, the school committee, to engage with the members of the, the public and the voters on what we have identified as a critical issue facing the Milton Public Schools over the next several years. And it is designed to get the thoughts and opinions of our constituents publicly so that when we are engaged in discussions at town meeting or with other town bodies, we can articulate not only the conversations that we have had in, in our, our personal lives, when people have approached us offline, but articulate the, the thoughts and impressions that people have had and have brought to us publicly in public meeting. So we're going to try and limit this to about forty minutes overall, maybe forty-five minutes. So to do that, we're going to ask people if they have a prepared statement, maybe a minute or two minutes of a prepared statement, and then we can engage in a little bit of back and forth and move on to the next individual. So do we, do we have a, we should have a sign up sheet over there. Why don't we?
I'll take care of it.
Yeah. Why don't we put a sign up sheet over there? All right. So maybe if we could circulate that and if there's, yes.
Can I have a minute? We, we can definitely do that if you, if you, if everyone wants to speak. The other thing I was thinking about doing is taking the mics. It's not so much here, but for the view, for the viewing public at home, that they, that you'd need the microphone so that they can hear you on the television. So you might want to take the mics off and even if you, I don't know, if you just want to sit where you're sitting and then you could raise your hand and ask and just pass the mic around instead of the back and forth.
That would be a good idea.
That sounds, alright, so I'll, I'll give you the mic. You good, Mr. Jett? Okay, thank you.
So, so why don't we, why don't we start this process with whoever would like to lead off? Why don't you give us a, your, your name and a little bit of background? And if you have a prepared statement, would love to hear it. And comments, we'll go back and forth and we'll take things from there. So who would like, who would like to start?
Okay.
Sure, I can speak. So my name is Jeffrey Walford. I have three children. Actually, actually, as of next year, I will have three children at Cunningham Elementary School. We're thrilled with this school system. I'm here tonight because we received some information regarding the enrollment and projections for increased enrollment over the next probably ten or more years. I guess I'm a bit confused. I thought there was going to be some discussion about the data in that. I have reviewed and I can ask questions, but if there's going to be some discussion of the data, I'll, I'll hold any questions until later.
So it was not our, we don't have a, a written presentation to give to you tonight, but, but we're happy to talk about the data in general. We've all gone, we have gone over it multiple times ourselves. If you have specific questions or points about that, that you'd like to start with to lead us in the direction you would like to go.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. So in, in my review of the data, I understand there are some limitations in terms of the projections, but just in terms of a rough estimation, it looks as if there is potentially up to fifty students per grade, at least in the grades K through eight, projected over the next, I think out until 2021 or 2020 or so. My question to that is, I, I think we assume that this is going to impact classroom size. Are there considerations right now in terms of how that will be mitigated? Either in terms of hiring additional teachers, considering temporary space, trailers, or even more permanent space, you know, a, a new elementary school or new other facilities?
All right. So I'll start.
Okay.
And then you can fill in the gaps.
Okay.
So all, all of those things have been considered. What we have done thus far is we have been able to find locations for those additional students within our existing buildings by using existing spaces. We have needed to hire additional teachers to accommodate those additional classrooms. We are actively engaged in the process of looking at a solution, whether that is remodeling our, some of our current space, adding on to some of the schools, or building a fifth elementary school. And with that, I'll turn the microphone over to Norela.
Yeah, so, all right. So basically for this year, we actually just had our summer, our summer summit that where we kind of set goals and agendas. And the space in enrollment issue is like, you know, first and foremost at the top of our agenda. So what we've mentioned before, based on the data that we have received, we need to put in a short term and a long term goal. Okay? So by the end of this year, and I'm going to turn it over to the Chair of our Facilities Committee, Ada Rose Maron in a minute, but what we're, the goal that we'd like to have by the end of this year is hopefully a short term recommendation of what we will do in the short term to handle this. And the long term is a bigger issue with regards to space, with Dr. Donahue just mentioned about the possibility of a new building. Something else I just want to kind of throw out there to make you guys as parents aware of that, with regard to a new building, we are, we, if that's even a possibility down the road of an actual building in the town, that would be something that we have to work with the selectmen on, because there are, there are several building issues in the town which you might be aware of. There's a new fire station issue. Many of you might be aware that there's a big advocacy for youth center, you know? And we're working, one of the things we're going to be starting in the fall is maybe having a joint committee to research, analyze, gather the data of what, and again, how are we going to pay for it? Of what we might do if we build a new building, how would we best utilize that? Would we have one building that would be for the schools and one that could be something that could be utilized by different parties, like maybe a youth and a senior center? Would it be, you know, we don't know yet. These are just all up in the air things that we need to think about. So as far as a new, an absolute new building goes, that is something that we feel needs to be more of a collaborative town effort with regards to the funding of that. But the short term that we're looking at, that Dr. Donahue mentioned, we, we have researched and powwowed different possibilities. Again, we're going to spend the year, we have what we call a Facilities Advisory Committee that deals with all facility issues in all six schools. So the legwork of the short term goal, I mean, the short term solution that we'd like to hopefully solidify by the end of the year is going to be hashed out in that, in that Advisory Committee this year. And I'm going to turn it over to Ada Rose Maron to kind of explain what the steps we might take this year in, in order to get to where we want to get.
Okay. I don't want to take up too much of the time because I know you all came here to, to speak as well, but I just did want to say, in terms of what we've been doing up until now, those of you with kids in the school, schools may have noticed that we've been turning other spaces into classrooms to accommodate the increased population. So art rooms, music rooms, computer labs are all sort of, have been kind of subject to being captured and turned into classrooms to accommodate the expansion enrollment. And there are a lot of us who would love to have those buildings, those classrooms available for art, music, and computer labs as they were meant to be. So ultimately, that's, that's what we would hope for. Yeah, as, as a member Varela mentioned, there will be work this year sort of analyzing the current facilities and what our options are, and with the hope that ultimately we'll be able to go to town meeting with a proposal that would help us move on to the next step in terms of recommended action.
Thank you. Anyone else? Or maybe I should just say next?
Yeah.
Because I presume there's someone else. And the microphone is in large part for the audience at home.
Right, so it won't be echoed in the ear.
It's not really for us, so.
Yeah. Thanks. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of questions. When you were speaking of a short term solution versus long term, how, what is the timeframe for a short term? And what is the timeframe for a long term?
Okay. So do you want me to answer that, Ada, or you want to do it?
Well, it's, it's my understanding that, that with, for this school year, we're using up some of the last available spaces to accommodate the students for, in the coming school year, so the 2018, 19 school year. 2019, 20, we're, we're going to really be kind of up against the wall in terms of, of making, making it all fit. And, and that's why we're, we're really working hard to figure out what may be just a temporary solution for a while. And, and it's hard to know exactly how long, but it, it will be a matter of at least a few years. Construction takes a while, approvals and finding the funding, there would, there would need to be townwide support, I would imagine, for funding for additional construction if that, if that indeed were, were the case. So, yeah, I would say at least, at least a couple, couple years, couple, three years.
I think a, yes, I think a realistic expectation, for example, today, if we had the money to build a school or an addition onto a school, it would, it would take three years from that moment to when you had students in chairs in the classrooms. So, so that's, that's the lead time if you're talking about building permanent new space, whether it's a new building, whether it's in addition to a current building. It's roughly three years.
I guess my question is more like when you have a strategic plan and you're planning on when you're going to make decisions, what, you know, what, what is the deadline that you have made for yourself?
So, and which, which decisions?
The short term.
I, I just, when you say shorts, short term could be a year, short term could be three years, you know?
Yeah.
Like three compared to ten or, you know, one compared to five, I don't know what.
So I, I would like our, I would like the goal to be that we have, so to, to further what Ada Rose Maron just mentioned, so with the Facilities Committee this year, we're going to, we're going to investigate the space that we have. We've been, again, powwowing possibilities. At the end of the day, as I always say, and I've learned it four years as school committee, it's all about the money, right? It's all about how are we going to pay for this? And there's a lot of options, but at the end of the day, what are we, what can we afford? What can we get the town to approve, right? So a couple of the short term possibilities, and this is not, nothing is set in stone, but some of the short term possibilities that we are looking at, that we will investigate this year and try to bring, as Mr. Rose Maron said, to town meeting as possibilities, they're all, nothing's set in stone, is do we take the current Cunningham Colicott Library, okay, that space, and maybe convert it into several classrooms? Is that an option? What would that cost?
Or any school library.
Yeah, or any school library. Okay? If it's that one or another school library, I mean, that's the first, the first place that you're going to go. Second option that we, that we have powwowed and thought about is that there is, which we never renovated because of various issues, there is a third floor, as you noted, Cunningham School, fourth floor, fourth floor, I'm sorry. I think about third, but it's a fourth floor. And we would have to have that evaluated, even by the, the Fire Department, what it would take, again, the cost of the money, to renovate that. You know, so again, that would, that would be not building on to, it would just be converting and renovating within the school as a possibility. Again, these are just possibilities. And we have to figure out what would it cost, you know? And then, and basically, so the Facilities Committee by the end of this year would like to investigate some of those sort of short term possibilities that we've thought about at the current space of our school. And what Ada had said is then what, the next step that you have to do is you have to do a recommendation to town meeting. And we have, how many town meetings this year? I think we have one in January and one in May.
In October.
And we have one in October. So I don't think it'll be October's town meeting, but our goal would be for later in the year to possibly put, you know, our, our article and our recommendations to town meeting to let them know that, I guess the next step that we would want to get is a request for, a request for proposal to, again, you know, let them know what we've analyzed and what we want to recommend, and then how much money, get a request proposal, how much money those would cost. Because that's, that's cheap to do the requests, cheap money to analyze and see, and then we'll evaluate it. So the reason why we're also having these forums is to educate you guys, the steps that we're taking, you know, to continue to keep you in the loop of, you know, what it's going to cost, and to also get your feedback. I mean, the feedback from you all too is, I, I feel, I've mentioned to my colleagues is, you know, the choices that we have, you know, would you, would you rather, you know, the floor, the upstairs, the floor be renovated and not take the library, but if we can get more classrooms from the library and the library areas, you know, instead of that? I'd, I'd like, you know, your feedback too about how you feel about, do we exhaust as many spaces as we can with regards to art and music before we do that? Because it costs money, you know?
Number one.
Yeah. I just want to mention, just going backwards a little bit, that this past year, I was on the Facility Subcommittee and we explored lots of, we had a lot of discussion about this issue. We explored the idea of, of trailers or mobile classrooms as a possibility. Bill Ritchie, who's, who's the lead person on this, said that the, because of the OSHA and environmental and issues, that the actual cost of doing those kinds of trailers are almost as expensive as building a brand new building or an addition. We also approached other community schools in Milton to see if they would be willing to think about, and not that we were just, we were just exploring, where no one, no one made any kind of commitments, but we reached out to some of the parochial schools, we reached out to Curry College and some other places to see, you know, if they had any space, if they could rent some space to us for the short term. That wasn't an option. So we have been looking at this issue a lot during this past year, and now we're really trying to prioritize it in terms of really moving forward, in terms of what everyone else has shared.
Does, does that answer your question in terms of timeline? So, yeah. So to sum up, we are, we're, we're currently being very reactive within the bounds of what we're able to do in our budget. Once we exceed those bounds, the timeline becomes imposed by other external factors, town meeting and working with other bodies in town. Next.
So, in a, so I'm Emily Speck and I have two children at the Tucker School. And so I have a couple kind of connected questions. One is, we're talking a lot about space, but one of the things I've been noticing as a parent and I'm wondering about with this is actually class size. So as you do this planning, both short term and long term, what are, what are the current desired class sizes? How do those differ from what the actual class sizes are? And how do we take that into account? And then the other thing I'm wondering about that may be Tucker specific, but we've just started a couple preschool programs at Tucker which are taking classroom space. What happens to those programs as you get more kindergartners? We know that research shows that quality preschool education is really important. Would it be easier to find other spaces for the preschool program so that you have more flexibility for the elementary programs? How has that, that, that level of education played into this? So again, those are my kind of two questions.
Those are great questions. I'm going to turn it over to the administration and they can talk to classroom size.
We did a class assignment today, so I'm going to have Dr. Pavlicek begin on the class size. We have suggested class sizes.
Our goal class sizes for kindergarten is no more than twenty-three. That's with a teacher and a, an aide, part of, wait, point eight aide. In, in French, at first grade, the class size is limited to twenty-six. That's because of those classes, of course, get smaller, if anything, as you go through time. People generally don't enter the French immersion program after first grade. It's an unusual event. In the English program, the first grade English Invasion Pathways class sizes are limited to twenty-two, goes to twenty-three in second grade and twenty-five above that. So those are the, the caps that we impose upon ourselves. To date, we've been very good at keeping to those caps. We've had a couple anomalies where a class has gone over for one reason or another, but as of right now, in, in scheduling people for next fall, we're not going over those caps. Of course, if forty-three people move in in August, I may have to eat those words, but right, as of this moment, we are within the caps on all those classes.
Can I follow up on that? So I understand that those are the caps. Are the caps the desired enrollment? Or are the?
Limit.
Those are limits.
Caps, the upper limit.
Upper limit.
So what would be the desired enrollment, for example, in a kindergarten classroom with a point eight aide?
For, for me, I repeat all the time, eighteen to twenty for a full day kindergarten with a point eight aide. But you, those are the limits. And then we're try, we try to be very sensitive at the school, where, schools where we have sub-separate classrooms, where the children are included. When Glenn and I do the assignment, we're trying to be sensitive because those children are included and the goal is to include them all day. And so we try at the Glover and the Colicott and the Cunningham to identify where the children are at the grade levels, so when they're included, we try to save a space for them if at all possible. And I've said publicly, it's a very unusual community. There are other communities where the first grade might have thirteen or eighteen, and across town it might have thirty. In this community, when, and we've worked with the realtors, when individuals move into a neighborhood and they register, they're told at registration that their assignment is pending class size. And so then we sit down and we might say, Mr. and Mrs. Pavlicek, you moved into the Tucker, those class sizes are capped, but I'd like you to meet the principal of maybe three, two, or one other school where there are seats. We set up for those families to go and meet with the principals, take tours of the schools, and in our experience, only one parent has ever come back to me wanting to go back every year, seeing if there was a seat open, because we say that they, their children go to school, they identify with the school, they fall in love with the school like the gentleman who started, and they don't want to transfer their children. And we provide the transportation. So that's how we take care of the class size. You, your second question was, oh, preschool. So in the Milton Public Schools, we have an integrated preschool. I met one gentleman here tonight whose child is going into the program. And in the integrated preschool, starting at three years of age, children with identified special needs who live in the community provide services. And in the program, you have the same number of role models. There are three programs that are half-day, a morning and afternoon, one program that children's needs require all day. So half of the children have special needs, the other half of the children are children without identified special needs. And so that's a very successful program, it's a thriving program. Some children in the community don't only need services on a, two times thirty a week, and they go to the Colicott Cunningham site. That preschool has always been housed at the Colicott, it's now going to be housed at the Cunningham. Minimal change, minimal impact. It was just the size of the school equalizing the resources. Would, we worked on the advancement budget to Emily's comment, we identified a space, it's not a full classroom at the Tucker, it's really a half-classroom. And we have a preschool, an all-day preschool at the Tucker, and we also have another half-size classroom where we have a morning and a half-day program, half-day morning, half-day afternoon. So we started those programs. We were charged by Member Eberhart and under Ada Rose Maron's leadership with school staff, where are we going with our preschool? To Emily's point, we're huge advocates of preschool, but we don't have the space or the funding to create preschool. There is a huge demand. When we do these follow-up forums, we'll give you, there's something like a waiting list for, we did, had a lottery, forty students on the waiting list for the full day at Tucker. And so we've really capped that because of finances and because of space. But again, those, we probably would have had a hard decision to make about the Tucker preschool if it had been full space. They, they could never even be classrooms.
Hi. My name is Meg Dietrich. I'm a resident here in Milton, I have three children, one currently at Cunningham. I had a question on the short term solution options that were offered, as well as the forum where you had offered us to give an opinion on whether we'd want to get rid of a library versus the fourth floor at Cunningham. I know you said that the class size could vary based on how many classrooms you could get out of the library versus how many you would get on the fourth floor. I was wondering if you could elaborate on that? And then I also just wanted to comment on which I would prefer as far as where you were looking to renovate, once, you know, I could get some more numbers behind that.
Sure. So, so part of what we're doing is, so we're, we're now at the stage in this process where we have come up with, with all of these ideas for possible solutions, and we, we need to know the cost of implementing some of those ideas. What is the cost? So, so part of what we're doing is, so we're now at the stage in this process where we have come up with, with all of these ideas for possible solutions and we, we need to know the cost of implementing some of those ideas. What is the cost of taking a library at any school? Cunningham, Collycot gets, we talked about that because it's, it's a large, beautiful library, and turning that into classrooms? Or a gymnasium? Turning a gymnasium into classrooms? Or converting that, that top floor at Cunningham into classrooms? So we can guesstimate based on the square footage involved, how many classrooms you could get out of that? But all of those spaces are different spaces and they have, they would have different requirements if you were going to turn them to code into educational spaces, different from what they are now. So, so based strictly on the square footage there, I don't, I don't know if we have, do we have a ballpark for some of those spaces?
The last number we had on the fourth floor of Cunningham was on the order of a million and a half dollars to bring that up to code and make classrooms up there. It's minimally fire space adapted. There's, there are sprinklers, but not enough that would make, for, for classrooms. You'd have to deal with the windows, which are lovely dormant windows, but not necessarily appropriate for a classroom. It would be a lot of work to do. The original build, school building project had designs to put space up there, but as the cost got large, that was one of the things that was value engineered, as it's called, out. And so it was left as more or less an, an open space, which is used primarily for storage now. It's probably large enough, you know, for four classrooms. It's a good, it's a good sized space. I mean, if you see the outside of the building, it runs the length of the building and it's, it's a big space. It used to be the cafeteria, it was a gym at one time. It's been various different things in the history of that building. So bringing it back could be an option. We don't really have an estimate on anything on the library, however. I think that maybe it's a point to talk about what we have later on in the evening with the, with the RFQ. We, we need some professional assistance. And one of the things we're looking at on the agenda tonight is to fund, to ask for requests for proposals for architects to look at our existing spaces and give us feasibilities and costs and ballpark estimates of what reasonably can be done. I mean, it's easy for us as, we're all laban here to look at and say, well, I'd like to do this. And all of a sudden, the fire chief goes and he comes in and says, over my dead body, you will. You know, it's one of those things where we need to get some professional assistance before we go terribly far down this road. I mean, we can all brainstorm, but we, we really need some more hard data.
And what's your
I, I know I'm only one parent of many, so I know I'm just the first opinion being thrown out there, but
Yep.
In the era of music on carts and art on carts and losing that type of, you know, let's go to music, let's go to art now, and also in the era of screen time and iPads, I would personally never want to see a school library be turned into classrooms. I feel like if we have raw square footage that can be utilized to provide for classrooms, that would be where my vote would go. But like I said, I know I'm only one parent, but I just feel strongly in schools having libraries and books that can be provided to children.
Thank you. Would anyone else?
Maybe that gentleman over there.
Jim?
Hi, this is kind of a follow-up question.
It's for the television viewers, it's okay.
Hi, this is kind of a follow-up question. So I assume that if, and I understand this is a process and money comes first and I applaud your work in getting that hurdle overcome first. But if things like converting libraries and converting gymnasiums and things like that are being considered, are we also considering plans for bringing those back after the initial temporary stage is over? Because a, a school without a gym or a library is a big deal and I'm not asking for your opinion on that now, but will that be part of the proposal to town meeting next year?
I would, I would clearly think so. You know, none of, and, and that gets, that gets into sort of that, that phase of the conversation, whether it makes more economic sense to, to do those things and then undo them? Or to, to find some other, to, to do, even though it costs as much as an addition, temporary classroom space, will you do something else? That, that's part of that whole conversation and, and actually getting professional help measuring the costs.
Yep.
Hi, my name is Tangerine and I have two children in school. I hear a lot about making changes to the elementary schools, but I don't hear anything these schools funnel into the middle school and the high school. Does that mean that there's adequate space in the middle and the high schools to accommodate the increase in children that are enrolling? Or are we looking at making changes throughout the complete school system?
That, that's an excellent question.
Glenn, do you want to speak to that?
The enrollment projections we're working on are showing that the, the primary increase we have in enrollment is at the elementary level. Now that will eventually bubble up to the middle and high school. But what we're seeing now in the demographics of people moving into town is they're moving in with young children. We are getting some people moving into middle school and high school. But at this point, our, you know, immediate concern is the elementary schools because they're the ones who are really bursting at the seams. Middle school and high schools are a little different. You, you have a little more play with what you can do of the, example I give at, at the high school is, you know, there's a, a classroom down the hall, it's a history classroom, the teacher teaches in there five classes a day. They don't teach the other two because those are their prep periods. I mean, it's not ideal, but you could conceivably have a teacher who floats among those classrooms, you know, and takes two classes here and two classes there and two classes there. It's obviously not ideal. But unlike an elementary school where that classroom is in use, even now with specials on a cart, even more of the day than it was before in some cases, that's much harder to accomplish at an elementary level than it, than it is at the middle and high. So middle and high is an issue, but it's, it's, you know, a couple of years down the road issue and the other one is staring us in the face and, and demanding some action right now at the elementary schools. That's why I think we're concentrating more there.
And can I just follow up to Dr. Pavlicek? Also too, as you know, like in this town as well, in middle and high, there is flight to private, you know, where, so there's always a, the numbers will, although we are, we are getting a lot more people that were flighting to private to stay here because of how a good event education and the programs that we offer. But, you know, that, even the data that we've, that we've received from NESDEC, that it's, it's, I think it's a little harder to predict how much will, retention will stay as opposed to the legacy not, data in the past that, you know, by seventh and eighth grade, a lot of people go out to private, both, you know, all girls, all boys, or prep, you know, as well. So that we don't have, we don't have everybody moving from those four elementaries up to six, eight. You know, it's definitely lessons.
Which, I was going to say, so the short answer to your question is, it, it probably won't be as bad of an issue and we have a broader array of flexible solutions that don't require spending large amounts of money. So we're not as concerned about it.
So that brings me actually to my follow-up question. So given that we've just had an override, it's possible that the money won't necessarily just appear? I'm wondering if things, other creative solutions like moving fifth grade up to the middle school and moving eighth grade into the high school where there is more flexibility and making our elementary schools one through fourth are being considered and what the logistics of that might look like? Because any of these renovation plans aren't even a next year solution, it doesn't sound like. They're at least a two or three-year solution off, but we might be having a problem next year. Sounds like we're, we've got this year figured out, just barely. So are there other, other types of solutions like that being considered? If the money doesn't exist, or what happens if we don't get another override or get enough money for the renovations?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, they are. That, that's, that's the reality. We have the students, we need to put them somewhere.
And those, those ideas have been considered and they're on the list. I mean, we've, we've come up with quite a list of possibilities and you all have thought of many of them that really, they're, they're tough choices, but, but those are definitely things that we've considered.
Because, because the hard thing to, you know, I mean, as you know, is in some ways, when we, when we bring this to town meeting, the body, you know, and to the warrant committee and the powers that be to fund it, you know? Being, being a school advocate my whole life here in Milton for the past 17 years, you have to show that you've exhausted all possibilities. You know, you just can't go there and say, I know this sounds, and I, and I want everything, I want an art music room, an art room, all that stuff. But you can't go to town meeting and say, well, we're not giving up the art room and we're not, you know, that we haven't, we haven't exhausted all the financial, you know, constraints that we, that we can make that choice, even though it's not ideal, before you kind of ask the people for the money. Do you know what I'm saying? So, so you, we, we're educating the town, you all as parents, that these tough choices need to be made. And, you know, again, if the funding doesn't come, as Dr. Donnie you said, we, there, there are some hard choices that will have to be made. If the funding is available, then maybe not so. But it is, it is what it is at the end of the day, if the money's not there. Yeah.
Is this on?
Yep.
As a CPAC parent and board member, which is, parents of special needs children, for those who don't know, the national average is one in 10 children have some issue, whether it be low functioning or high functioning with just, you know, a little therapy needed for them. You know, this is great, everyone is just thinking about the typical kids having somewhere to go, but if one in 10 kids has a special need and projected 151 kids are going to be joining the elementary schools, the SPED programs are going to be, you know, exploded faster than anything. And, you know, a, as a parent of a special needs children, I can tell you, I've already gotten dirty looks and snide comments behind my back because my kids get funding where their music room gets, you know, put in the graveyard. And so how are, how are my kids going to be funded without me getting, I'd like to say a swear word, but I know we're on TV, you know, throughout town, again?
That, that's an excellent point. And thank you for coming, thank you for making that point, that, that's, that's critical. And, you know, as, as we say when we, we have these conversations, you know, special education, it does get a lot of attention, but it, it's part of our, it's part of our community. And, you know, it's, it's, you're our neighbors and, and our friends. And so in, in some ways, when you look at the range of options and the range of solutions that we have, as, as I mentioned earlier, we've gone with statistics and the one that I, I think is very powerful is the fact that we have a, essentially a 25% increase in enrollment at the elementary level. And that's another school. We're running five elementary schools in four buildings. So if you, if you build a fifth elementary school, it, it accomplishes a lot of those things and it, it, it takes into account a lot of those issues, a lot of those space issues, as you pointed out, that, that may not sort of come readily to everybody who's talking about this. But, but that will have to be part of the conversation, making sure that we have enough resources and space available for our special education population.
I just want to make sure that people understand that, you know, our kids are guaranteed services where their music room isn't guaranteed and, you know, I would love for everyone to get everything, but, you know.
We all would, we always.
Absolutely.
And, you know, the French program never gets any flack. So has anyone considered getting rid of that?
No, you know what? Yeah.
It gets, it gets a lot of flack.
Yeah. And one of the, yeah, different means. And one of the things I do want to speak to when we do talk about this, as Dr. Donnie you said, I think that as parents in the community, we all want to be supportive of all programs. We really do. And we, we don't want to get into a French pathways war. We don't want to, just what you spoke to, we don't want parents of children who don't have children in special needs programs at all in the district to, to get hot-headed about that. This is, this is an issue. I, I mean, this is, unfortunately, it's like if you build it, they will come. This is, you know, as you would say, a good problem. The reason why we have this problem is because people are moving into our town. I know this for other reasons too. We have a good police force and a good fire department, everything else. But at the end of the day, if you're choosing to raise a family, you're moving in here because of the schools. And people are moving in with three kids, four kids, and there's nothing, there's nothing that we can do about that. So, you know, they, they move in and we, we track as a NESDEC, if those, any of you read that NESDEC report, we track the birth rates, we go back to zero, and what the enrollments are in kindergarten at age five, and they're tripling, they're tripling from the amount of kids that were born five years prior to the number of kids that are rolling in the school. So we can't turn anybody away for any reason. We need to accommodate all of them. It just, it, I do think that it's been surprising, the NESDEC representative that did the research said that ourselves, and I believe Lexington and maybe Newton, are the only three towns during the Great Recession that increased in enrollment and value of home and stayed steady. And I think a lot of that has to do with the school programs that are offered in those towns. So it's, it's, we're here because the schools are good. And we can, I think if we all work together, continue to make them good. We here at the table, most of us, lived through the old school building project. You know, we had kids go to schools in conditions that would, you know, I, my daughter's first, first grade was at the old 1909 wing. It looked like, as my father said, the morgue of the Boston City Hospital when he was a kid growing up in the 1950s. And she still had a great experience for first grade at Collycot at that thing. It was only a year or two and we moved on and she spent the rest of her life in beautiful buildings. But you can still, we can still work out a great program with temporary spaces, but, and we want the conversation, we want the feedback, but we want everyone to support everyone as well and not get into, can we cut this, can we cut that? That's not what we're going and that's not what's going to happen. Okay.
I wonder, I mean, you said the word temporary, does that mean you go a little bit further?
Mike?
We have to. The home viewers.
People at home.
We can't hear you, yeah, sorry. You just speaking to the mic, it's all set.
But are people still going to come if our schools have no art rooms, no music rooms and no libraries? Then we're going to build it? Too late and nobody's going to come. And Westwood is a town that's closing schools. I mean, let's not get ourselves into that position.
That, that is
And the other thing is, we keep talking about costs and I understand that the people at town meeting are concerned about money and the people in town in general are concerned about money, but who's advocating for our children? I mean, what are the costs to our children of removing a library from their elementary school? I mean, I hope that somebody who's going to town meeting and talking about what A is going to cost and what B is going to cost is also talking about the costs to the children who are living and growing up here.
Yes. I, I think that's a good, that's an excellent point and I, as me, as, as somebody who's been a town meeting member for 15 years, I, I became a town meeting member during the old school override because I wanted to be a voice for the kids in school. So I urge all of you to not only speak to us, but speak to your town meeting members and ensure that you, you relay that same message and passions to them, or if you think about running for town meeting yourself, that all the better. Because then you have the strongest voice, you have the platform of town meeting. So excellent point.
There's a critical role for your advocacy
Yes.
In this, in this issue too. Who's speaking out for the kids is, it's you, it's us, and we all need to work together to, to do that. It's, 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 it's important. And as we see from the buildings that we built 20 years ago, you know, we're, our kids are in beautiful, state-of-the-art buildings right now because we did this 20 years ago. And we, the town has grown as a result of that, of people recognizing what we're offering and programs and the facilities. And we want to maintain that and, and we all need to work together to convince people of the importance of that. I think it's for the future of the town and our children.
In light of that advocacy, I was wondering why, when I had the question about short-term versus long-term planning, why a plan would not be ready to present to the town meeting in October? I mean, this seems pretty high priority.
The warrant closes in a few weeks.
Yeah, August 10th.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and we're just not anywhere near.
Sorry, what was that? What closes in?
Yeah, the, the
Oh, the warrant.
The warrant for the October town meeting closes in, in like three weeks. So it's, it's not like we can just wait until October and have what we have then. So as, we're kind of hoping to, to shoot for a January town meeting, to have something after we engage some consultants to advise us about some of the feasibility and some of the costs. And we're hoping that will happen this fall and that by, by January, that we'll have something to take to town meeting to at least begin the, the ball rolling and, and moving forward in, in some of these possibilities.
And I'm actually, will be new to the Milton Public Schools this coming fall. My daughter is going to be attending kindergarten and I, thanks. And I was wondering, so it just seems like this is something that has been brewing for some time, teachers having to utilize whatever space is available. How are they responding to this and what is the retention going to be for the great educators that are in the system now that have made the school system what it is?
Do you want to, do you want to speak to that?
When the prior parents spoke, I believe that communities take on personalities. When the prior parent spoke, I believe that communities take on personalities. And so, the parent, as the parent who spoke about the music and the SPED, in the world of special education, there are some children that have to go out of district and, for their programming. And as a result of the school building project, in the will of the community, parents want their children to go to school in this town. And so, we had over 100 children going out of district, and they'd have to take transportation that could be up to two hours. So we've built programs and brought over, we had over 100 children in these out-of-district placements, and we went down to around 42, we're up to about 55. That's a very good indicator for the community, those are children who are staying in the district. To the parent who spoke about art and music, I lobby all the time because I believe that generations of parents voted for this school building project because they understand the value of art and music, and a library is the heart of the building. And so, we've protected those spaces. And the teachers know we've protected those spaces, they've been involved when we talked about the transition of the preschool and identifying where our programs should go. And so, we don't really have an attrition program, problem with teachers moving. The teachers are involved in this space. This is unbelievable, when Member Varela spoke, this is unbelievable space for your children and for these people to work in. I always dare people, can, you know, I always say, the Collicott was brought down to the ground, but all the rest of the buildings, some are 60% new, or 20, and I always say, you can't tell what renovated space is. So I think the teachers hear the support of this community, and override means a lot to talented teachers. This is a community that the parents value public education. When I speak to the teachers, I say, this community is at schools. These parents and community members value their public schools. They vote overrides. That's parents voting. So we don't have a problem, you know, it hasn't hit the teachers, the art, music, well, the phys ed isn't such an issue, but the art and music, we have tried to work around that, the scheduling, they know their priorities. So all of these space issues, to your point about timing, it really hasn't, I, I don't, can't really identify a teacher, you know, years ago when Member Varela spoke, support, special ed support classes would be in spaces that weren't appropriate, but you know, walking through those schools, the, there are offices there, there are SPED providing room, SPED providers' rooms that are well-lit, you know, great windows. So at this point, we haven't had, we haven't had an issue. And, but, you know, you bring up a great point. It's very interesting that kindergarten classrooms are bigger than every other elementary classroom, when you, when we built and did the school building project. And they have the bathrooms and the cubbies in them. And so, when we've expanded our kindergarten, we've tried to be sensitive to, well, we don't have enough rooms with those bathrooms and cubbies, but we build the cubbies, we try to, we spent an inordinate amount of time trying to decide where to put the kindergartens, so they're right near a lavatory. So the, we're very sensitive to what you're speaking of, because we've been there before, but right now, it hasn't impacted the staff.
And, and just to follow up, in the past, when we were finishing up and going through the renovation, it never impacted the retention of the teachers back then, so I can't foresee it really happening, you know, and any changes that will occur in the future.
But you had a very, your question, through the school building project, people asked, which you just asked, and what happened was that every teacher had new space, a renovated space. So it wasn't like I had to wait 10 years and all of these teachers and children were getting new space. Through the project, everybody had ownership because everybody's space was new or renovated to new. But it's a great question, and I'll express to the teachers that you asked that, but it hasn't impacted them yet. Their, their space hasn't yet been impacted.
And to your point about town meeting in October, the, the short answer to that is political, and I don't mean that pejoratively, I mean that, you know, Milton Town Meeting is, is unique, they're, they're very heavily involved with a lot of the details in town governance that you don't see in other communities. And they expect, demand a certain level of detail and professionalism to that detail when you go to them and when you make a pitch for a substantial amount of money. So if you, if you don't have the, you won't get it. But, so, so not only from a practical standpoint should you have it, but, but also, it's, it's sort of, it's the expectation that they have, and it's, it's only appropriate that you meet the expectation that they have when you take up their time with a presentation.
I'm sorry, I have a follow-up question. I don't mean to monopolize the mic, if anybody wants to take it up. So, would you be able to briefly explain, I guess, why this wasn't a hot topic this past year, so that that could be ready?
It was, it was.
Okay, so then why isn't it ready? I guess, why isn't it ready to be sent?
Well, yeah, so, we've been, we've been talking, like I want to say, I think it's great to see this great number, but we've been talking about it for a while, you know, and, and making the necessar, and making the necessary steps. So, so, it, you, it, just like you said, you can't, if anything in this town, because again, with funding and money, you can't just all of a sudden say, you know, snap your fingers and do it. So, this whole year, we, this is a big priority, but there's a lot of other issues that school committee, school committee also has to tackle and handle, that, that the district has to handle. So this year, we, as we said, we, we met and we evaluated and analyzed these possibilities. To what Member White said, we went out to a lot of different community places, like the parochial schools, like Curry, like Milton Academy, all these places, investigated all that stuff. You know, that, that doesn't, you know, that takes time. We spent the whole year doing that to see if that's a possibility. You have, you do have to understand, and I understand you're a new parent, I think it's great that you're so involved and eager, it's great, we love to get parents like this in our town. But, you know, we, we actually did put a lot of effort to exhaust all that, to, to, because as Dr. Donahue said, when you go to town meeting, you need to tell them that you have crossed every T and you have dotted every I before you ask them for money. You can't just say, I want a music and art room, so please give us the money, because in time, in time's ticking, and we're afraid that things are going to happen. So we have done, we've flushed out, flushed out all of that this year, we've powwowed the possibilities, we're going to vote an RFP, okay? And the goal is, by the end of the, by January, to go to town meeting to do that. I don't think that that's not moving things forward, you know, it, it is. And I think that with the, the continued conversation and advocacy by parents like yourself, I, I urge you to speak about it and get involved in it, because that will keep the motor running on this, so that people realize it's something that, that action needs to be taken.
And Dr. Craig, head.
And this even started years ago with the NESDEC study that we've been referring to. We have to be able to prove that this isn't just a blip on the screen, that it's not just a bubble that's going to burst. So we paid money and invested in this report given to us by NESDEC to show that these enrollment trends are going up in the first place. So that's yet more support for what Ms. Varela is talking about, because when we're, we're talking about the kind of money that we are, we need to make sure that, that this isn't just something that's going to disappear in two years or three years or whatever. And if we're putting that kind of money, I know we have to make sure that we, that we are doing it for a reason, and we are. So this has been going on for a number of years, and we're just at the point now where everything's kind of coming together, that we're hitting the kind of end of what we have in terms of classroom space, and we're hitting the point where we, tonight, are going to approve funding to get the study done, to see what we have in terms of the classrooms and so on, classroom space available that could be renovated and so on. So we really have been working hard on it, I assure you.
That, that's a big part of it. We, we needed, we needed to wait for the statistics to mature, to, to demonstrate that this is a clear continuing trend, and not just, you know, as we've said, a blip or a bulge that, that will be gone in a year or two.
We can't end up like Westwood, like the other parents spoke to, because shame on us if that happens.
But I want to just tell you that historically, 20 years ago, when the, we first went to town meeting and we were talking about the need for new buildings and renovations, a lot of people disbelieved the projections of the enrollment back then. And, you know, now we are the victims of our own success because we are bursting at the seams, and Milton continues to be a really attractive community for people to move to. I mean, I think Mary Gormly shared that we had people coming into kindergarten information night and first grade information night who weren't living in Milton, but were planning on moving in this summer, and were just there to get more information about the schools. And she said it was the first time in her long career that that's ever happened. So, we're kind of like, part of us is like, oh, and that's terrific, and the other part of me is like, uh-oh, you know, so it's hard, it's hard.
And, and there were also some different iterations of our NESDEC figures, because NESDEC's projections, was it last year's projections, weren't, weren't in track with what we were seeing. And so Glenn Pavlichek sat down with NESDEC to, to really look at what, what's going on here in Milton that they should be taking into consideration when they do their projections. And the projection shifted as a result of looking at what's happening here, and that it is different than is happening in other towns. So, all of those things have, have been happening quietly, but it's, it's been, you know, a building process, and it, it gives us all the more backup to take with us to move forward.
So.
And I apologize, I'm a little late, I don't know if this is special, but is there really thought of buying in the town and, you know, we need a new fire station.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, yeah.
And I know Randolph has built a beautiful teen center and senior center together and built new fire stations as well, it's bonded for that, but I don't know if you're talking about this, because it seems like a lot of times, like, schools should be in the money, other parts of town be all combining efforts, it'd be a great thing, I think, for, for long-term.
That, that's an excellent point. I don't know if anyone wants to speak, the answer's yes.
Yeah.
And I don't know if anyone else wants to expound on that.
Yeah, I mean.
We even did a field trip down to the, to the Generational Center in Randolph, which is a beautiful building and a wonderful setup, if you haven't been there. And it, it's, you know, the question is, is it a model that fits here, is it something, you know, we could do there? It's, it's, it's an excellent space.
Well, even if that, I mean, that model, there's something about the way you're even on, combining the town centers.
Yep. Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we've talked with the selectmen, we've talked with the selectmen that they want to put together sort of a combined committee. I said, I spoke to that earlier, Becky, before you came in, that this year is, that's, for, for long-term, that is something that we, we've decided in speaking, many of us with the various selectmen on many occasions, that we have to, we have to work together for the cost-effectiveness, to figure out how we can accomplish all the building issues that we have to accomplish together, and again, go to town meeting and whatever that plan ends up being. So I, I'm, I'm hopeful and, I'm, I'm hopeful and that, I think, moving forward, everyone's willing to work together, just like, just like we want to work together amongst the parents, I spread, that I do think the town officials, everyone's aware of the needs, and we need to figure out how to work together to move forward with the building space issues for everybody, yeah, to your point.
So that's, that's 45 minutes, I'm happy to do a few more minutes if, if people who want to speak have not.
Closing question?
Please.
So, this is my first time being at a meeting like this, and class size is something that I'm sure all of us are passionate about, or we wouldn't be here today. Is there anything we can do as parents or members of our community, whether it be raising awareness or things that we can do to advocate for this and to push us to be not just, you know, 20 people, but to get more people involved to show either what the issue is or what the possible solutions might look like, being short-term and long-term?
Definitely. Does anyone, anyone want to speak to that specifically?
Do you want to speak to that, Miss, Member Amber Hart, you haven't spoken yet, why don't you give the recommendations?
I told you I'm practicing, not as much talking. So I think the most important thing you can do is to, to attend meetings like this, to find out who are the town meeting members that represent the precinct where you live, and to reach out to them. You can email them, you can tell them that you know that this is an issue that's going to be coming before town meeting, and you would like it to be a priority, along with the other building issues in town, because those are priorities as well. They've been talking about a new fire station for many years now. To think about running for town meeting in the spring, I know you're a parent of young children, and that might not be something that you thought about, to also join the different groups in your school, to be involved with your PTO, to be involved with your diversity committees, to be involved so that when the schools are going through to the transition, whatever that transition might be, you, you'll be able to roll up your sleeves and, and support that, because that's sort of what we did when our children were going through the building process, right? We knew that it wasn't forever, not, like, these are, these are, they seem big problems now, because they are, but we're thinking about solutions. And just like before, we were going to find a solution that's in the best interest of all the children. You know, we talked about like, moving kids, like you mentioned about the fifth grade, and yesterday at the meeting, I said, you know, those are not solutions that I would, those would not be ideal solutions for me, because the model we have is a really good model, preschool, KDA, preschool to five, six to eight, nine to 12. Those are excellent models, strong educational systems, and I want to see those models supported. I want music back, I want art back, I want all those things back. So, but we might have to go through some bumps to get there. So the more you advocate by getting to know who's involved in the process, to volunteer in your schools, and if you work and you don't have time, just to stay involved, to pay attention to the, to the school committee website, to reach out, you can email us, you know, schoolcommittee@miltonps.org, or find our names and check in, because there are small and large ways that you can be involved. But you start now, then someday you sit here. And I mean it, like, you know, she'll, like.
We used to, I, 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 I mean, I've lost count how many times I was over there when my guys were one and three, seriously.
But I do think that coming here tonight is a wonderful thing, and I really can't say how much, on a beautiful, gorgeous, fabulous night like tonight, you all came, that's like, speaks volumes to all of us. And, you know, we, you know, we want the best possible school systems. My three children graduated from this district, Ada's children graduated, Betty's son did. We benefited tremendously, and we want the same for all of your children, and we will work very, very hard to get that. But your advocacy and your involvement in your, your school now, and in the town overall, is the best way that you can help us.
In town meeting, it's only five nights a year, just FYI, it's five, it's five nights in May, most, and sometimes a special one, like we said, one night here and there, but I advocate immensely. Becky Padara will say that, I got her to run for town meeting back in the day. But it gives, it gives you the strongest advocacy and the strongest voice for the schools. The more parents that we have on that, you know, you, you have the vote, and that's what it is, so. But if, if you can't do that, you can go to town hall and get the list of who your town meeting members are, you know, find out what precinct you are, and just what Member Amber Hart said.
And they're also on the town clerk's website, you can look on her website under town meeting and see which precinct you live in and who your members are.
And as our efforts progress during this coming year, and there will be progress in this year, we'll, we'll start to narrow down our options, we'll keep you informed, and we'll continue to have opportunities for dialogue like this, so we can be in touch, and you can tell all your friends about it and get involved, it would be great.
Dr. Craig.
Also in a more grassroots way, I am the parent of an elementary school-aged child, and I know that there's not always time to read the superintendent's last column, and there's not always time, with all due respect, to watch this school committee proceeding, et cetera. So I think in a more grassroots way, the best thing you can do is talk to the other parents who you're standing with as school's getting ready to let out, or as you're dropping off in the morning, to raise awareness. Because the truth is, we've been talking about this for quite some time, and we've had sessions where we've been talking to the public about this, and there's just not enough awareness of the urgency of this problem right now. So in my opinion, one of the best things you can do is spread that message and really talk to people about what's going on.
Yes, I would agree with all of that emphatically. And, you know, as, as we've pointed out here, this process is, it goes and fits and starts by nature of the fact that it's a, it's a public process, and we're dealing with public funding and public decision-making. So when we are in a, a period of sort of rapid discussion or decision-making, coming to these meetings like this and, and giving us your feedback, if we're in a situation where we have, you know, we're talking about several options, even just an email that says, I think option C is great, and I think option B is terrible, and I could live with option A, that would be really helpful, so that when decisions get made, you know, we, we have a, a sort of broad set of feedback to draw on. As part of what, what we talked about at our retreat the other day. As part of what we talked about at our retreat the other day, we would like to sort of decentralize our meetings and hold some of the school committee meetings at some of the schools. And we're going to try and have more of this kind of forum. So, coming to those, bringing your friends, encouraging your friends who didn't come tonight to go would be helpful. Well, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. That was very successful.
Yeah, we look forward to working with you.
That was great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else, more comments or questions? Nope. All right. Thank you.
It's great. All these people are the teacher.
You are welcome to stay.
Yeah.
All right, Superintendent, I'll turn the meeting over to you, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Jim and Donna Hugh. I'd like to invite to join at the table our new director of pupil personnel, Susan Fisakella. Susan?
As a way of introduction, first, I would like to recognize Tracy Grandow, who came up through the ranks, who was the high school sped chair and then became our director of pupil personnel. She decided that closer to her home, she wanted to be the director at Lexington High School, and so we posted the position. We went through two rounds of interviews. I want to recognize the committee. Member Whites, Abahad, and Craighead all sat on the committees. Melissa Feldman representing the CPAC. All of our principals served on one or both of the rounds. Karen Horn from CDM, Assistant Superintendents Sheehan and Pavlicek, and myself. And I think it's good for the viewing public to know that we post these positions. We had perhaps fifty, sixty applications. This committee, in some districts, the superintendent will go through the applications and say, decide what you want to do with those ten. But in this district, the committee members go through, I should have asked you to explain this, every application, we decide what we're looking for, in the perfect director of pupil personnel in this case, they decide who they want to see, who they want to interview. And I've been potty to this process that's been perfected, and I've seen one individual member lobby for an individual to come and be interviewed, and that ends up to be the individual we appoint. The group then brainstorms the questions. We have two rounds of interviews. The first is very programmed so that all of the candidates have equal opportunity to address a set of questions. And then in the next round, the finalists can be asked any question, and they can ask any question of us. And so, I am very proud tonight to introduce to the school committee, and this is their appointment, three of them have served, and I kept the chair involved and the other members. Susan earned her bachelor's degree from Clark University in psychology and elementary music. They say music majors go on to do all sorts of unbelievable careers. You earned your master's in the science of education with a major in intensive special education at Simmons College. And then Susan went on to the University of Massachusetts for her certificate in advanced graduate study in BCBA. And I was impressed by your comment that this ABA and BCBA field in special education is new and fast, quickly moving, and equips you to make unbelievable decisions. And so, currently, Susan has served for three years as the director of pupil personnel in the sharing public schools. The current superintendent said their loss is our gain, and the prior superintendent, who was a mentor to me and a friend, left a message, rave reviews, only positive comments. Susan, before that, was the assistant director of pupil personnel in the Weston Public Schools. In the NADAC Public Schools, she was a special education program supervisor, and I think your experience in the integrated preschools along your career is going to really lend itself to some unbelievable guidance for us. You were in the NADAC School as a preschool supervisor, and then we go back to that before your time, really, that BCBA and ABA expertise that led you to be the most qualified candidate. We all agreed. It was a very positive experience. I want to tell you, which I didn't tell you in our phone conversations, which you said we've had quite a few since you've been appointed, that you were to be complimented, and it speaks to the district. We had sitting directors of pupil personnel apply. I think the school committee now understand that the market goes both ways. These candidates do their research, it's a competitive market, and we believe we have found somebody, a very qualified candidate, who we're asking for your appointment tonight that will bring Milton's, very timely, Miss Chevry, for you to be here, Milton's program for children with special needs and the entire district to a new level. And so, on behalf of the district, I want to welcome you, introduce you to the committee. I'm sure they'll have some questions of you, and if you'd like to make any opening remarks, which you might be used to doing after all of these interviews. So, on behalf of the district, welcome, congratulations, and thank you.
Welcome. So, I don't know if you have any opening remarks that you'd like to make, or?
I want to say thank you to everyone for having me. The experience has been so welcoming. Sitting here, listening, is reinforcing my decision to want to be part of this community. Listening to the families speak, listening to you all speak about vision, it aligns with who I am as an educator, it aligns with who I am as a parent. I feel very fortunate to be here. I thank you all for the opportunity.
Excellent. Member White.
So, I had the pleasure of getting to know you during the interview process, and I just want to say that I was thrilled that you accepted the position and that you're coming. And I think I was very impressed with your breadth of knowledge and that you've worked in many different areas over the years, and I loved you. Your work ethic came across very strongly during the interview, and you're also very personal, so I really liked that part. And I think for people who know Dr. Pavlicek, they'll get a kick out of the fact that you and he were talking finance and budget, and I thought, oh, my goodness, this is going to be terrific. So, I welcome you, and I'm really glad you're here.
Thank you.
Dr. Craig.
I'd just like to echo what Ms. White just said, and to say that our decision in the end was a very easy one. After meeting you, you made what could have been a, you know, contentious process, a slam dunk. It was very easy. I'm so glad you accepted the position, and I too feel really fortunate that you're going to be part of our, of the Milton Public Schools.
Thank you. You all made it so easy, I felt so welcoming, welcomed, that it was, it was a slam dunk for me as well, so thank you.
I think at one point during the interview, you said, give me a hard question. I thought they were hard, but apparently they weren't.
We'll do, Member Rosemary. Member Rosemary.
I just want to welcome you. I haven't gotten to meet you yet, but I'm thrilled that you're here, and I'm so pleased to hear about your background in early childhood special education. It's a big priority for the schools, and having worked in early childhood education in Milton for a long time, it's a very vibrant early childhood community, both within the schools and the private early childhood community, and there are wonderful opportunities there to collaborate and reach out and work together with our colleagues in the private sector as well as in the public schools.
Thank you. I've been involved in preschool in all the districts I've worked in, that's where I started. So, if you can't find me, chances are, I'll be in the preschool, playing with someone.
Member Row.
I too just want to echo my colleagues' comments and welcome you. I wasn't part of the review committee, but I spoke to my colleagues, and again, they were such great remarks then about you when the interviewing process was going on. I also wanted to say that I too thought your resume was just so well-rounded, and I know for the past four, I don't know, four and a half years or so that I've been in the school committee, you know, learning so much about the special education process. And as we said earlier tonight, in a way, in public schools, special education, as Dr. Johnny is, you're our neighbors, it's our community, it's our duty and our privilege to serve that community, and, but we know that it's a challenging and costly situation, and it's great when we have, if we have a really strong leader to collaborate with so that, so that it's a successful program for everyone. And I look forward to having you as a strong leader to take the reins. And I know we have a CPAC member, we have a very active CPAC group, and, you know, and I know that they mentioned your communication skills, which I think will be great, and working with those parents. So, enthusiastic that we'll have a successful year with you on board, so welcome.
Great, thank you very much.
So, I'll say welcome to the family, and it's nice to have the seventh principal, I'm stealing your line, Dr. Gormly, back on board here. And so, I'm going to, I'm going to move to approve the appointment of Ms. Susan Fischella to the position of administrator of pupil personnel services for the Milton Public Schools.
One second.
All in favor? Manamus, wonderful, congratulations. Welcome.
Super happy.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, welcome, Susan.
Welcome.
Welcome again. Yeah, you too. I know, we know each other somehow.
It'll come to me.
High school valedictorian.
Yes.
Thanks, Susan.
By no means do you need to stay for the rest of it.
Yeah. Long day.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening.
I have some questions for you.
All right.
So, we tend to write, I'm sorry, I didn't follow the A, B, C, CBA.
So, now we're on, we're on the new five B, which is high school valedictorian salutatorian.
I'd like to invite our high school principal to the table, James Jet.
Thank you, Superintendent.
So, I think this was a year-long process, and if we remember last summer, the school committee was totally correct when Karen Cahill, James Jet, and I brought proposal to the school committee, and the school committee was correct that it needed more airing out, public involvement, parental, student and staff support. We went through a year-long process of eliminating the, these distinctions, and with the support of the school committee and of her parent and teacher support. And so, I had mentioned after that meeting that it was very moving to me at awards night, and when the valedictorian was recognized, and Principal Jet had everybody stand up, and during that week, we recognized students with perfect attendance, and we recognized another night, all of us, the top athletes, and another night, we recognized the top musicians. And so, as an edit, or I wanted to discuss with the committee, not having at graduation because there are even more benefits to the elimination. I've often wondered why you would tell somebody twenty-four hours before graduation that they were going to write a speech. Not at graduation, but at awards night, when awards are given out, we come here to educate, and it just hit home to me, we recognize the top athletes, the top musicians, Ms. Varela, the top attendance, if in fact, the valedictorian could be identified at awards night. And again, I spoke to Principal Jet, people who understand this will say, well, that will note that you're doing class rank, and Principal Jet said, we're still going to do the century club, so there's some recognition, you know, of academic excellence, and this wouldn't denote that everybody, he would, they would have to do everybody's class rank. It's a very small pool, and if awards night, you would consider recognizing the valedictorian. And James has some very clever ways, and Dr. Pavlicek told me, warned me, and he said that it's really up to the, and it's true, we've done a lot of research, the high school staff on some vote who's going to speak at graduation, sometimes the students vote, sometimes the staff vote, and whatever they want to do. This isn't at graduation, but it would be along with all of the students that are recognized for all of the unbelievable characteristics that the hundred and thirty thousand dollars in scholarships are given, if we recognized the valedictorian. I just wanted to put that on the table tonight, and, and again, you could say, why didn't I do it before? Well, this has been a developing story. But I have to say, the feedback I've gotten for the elimination of the class rank has been phenomenal.
Thank you. And so, in parallel to that, I was talking with the superintendent about our agenda for this evening, and I commented to her that, you know, not only did I have similar thoughts, but it seemed like there was a lot of confusion around this issue on that night. So, I wanted to give us a chance to talk about this topic. I invited Principal Jet here, who's kind enough to, I believe, interrupt his vacation for us.
Not vacation, I've been working.
He's been here, every day.
Working vacation, well, you should have, take the credit.
Six in the morning, six at night, eight-thirty at night.
To come here in a, in very much an informational role, he was thoughtful enough to do some research on this topic, and I, it seemed, I mean, we could have had this conversation in your absence, but it seems as though it's not only appropriate for you to be here as the principal, but where you had done some of the research for us to utilize you to an extent. So, with that, I'll open the floor to my colleagues to see if anyone has any comments, and we can get started.
Well, do, I guess, all right, well, I guess I would ask, I mean, I've had conversations with Mr. Jet myself, one-on-one. I don't know how I feel about it, after everything we went through and when the vote was finally made, and as Ms. Gormly had said, that I haven't really had any parent speak to me, and I was in the thick of it this year where I had a graduate, you know, so I went through all the senior benchmarks, you know, that you go through in senior year, and, you know, I don't, I don't know if we, bringing it back to the table, you know, I know we've talked a lot about all or nothing, I don't know, I guess, I guess, then what I would ask Mr. Jet is, and I've been through, you know, every awards night since I've been on school committee, so I understand that, you know, those nights are academic excellence, you know, so I guess it would be a good venue to actually, you know, acknowledge the person who has the highest GPA and give them recognition, but, but I still, I still, I still strongly believe in all of the points that you and Ms. Cahill made about the benefits of not having it, and the labeling and all of that, and as somebody who was a part of the senior class this year, that at times, it got, it got pretty divisive amongst those kids, amongst that top five, amongst, you know, this was this year, not other years, you know, it all depends, but I don't know about, I just would want it to be done in a way that, yes, I would like everyone to work the hardest, as hard as they can, and then whoever ends up, I guess, maybe being valedictorian if they're acknowledged that night, fine, but I think that there's only benefits to be made by eliminating it and not bringing that pool of, like, intense competition amongst each other back, and just letting everyone succeed and soar. We know this past year has been an unbelievably successful class on so many levels of academics, sports, music, the universities that have been accepted to, and I don't think that, you know, class rank played a big part of that, so.
Do Member Rosemary, and then we'll do Dr. Craig.
Well, I just want to confirm that if we're, if class, if the valedictorian, salutatorian are announced at the award, the academic awards night, that's after kids have been accepted to college, correct?
That is correct.
So, that they were all accepted to colleges based on their academic performance and other activities and everything else that went into it. activities and everything else that went into it without a number being attached to it, correct?
To some extent, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
If I could just elaborate on that, if we could take one step back, just for the public that may be viewing for the first time about this issue, or for folks who are not, by making a proposal, we never try to devalue the importance of academics. We have always said that we would like to eliminate class rank because we thought it would, class rank I'm talking about, we thought it would give our students up a hand, to Member Varela's point, we had a very successful class and our kids are challenging themselves to take the most rigorous course, courses that they can. 724 exams, AP exams were taken this year between 350 students. That is not devaluing it. I do believe that there's ways that we can acknowledge kids for their academic excellence. Again, valed Sal at the senior awards night, because that's the earliest we find out, because that's the time that we have to calculate all of the senior test scores, final exams and things like that, to give us a quick turnaround. I think I clearly stated that before, it's on the Tuesday after Memorial Day that we find that out and I'm usually calling that parent of the valedictorian and the salutatorian that evening. We also talked about it the last thing, and this is something I'm still willing to do and we're talking about it, even moving towards the Latin honor system with cum laude, magna cum laude and summa cum laude. We talked about that and talking about ways that we're doing. So I'm still looking forward to that and so if the decision is to do valed Sal, I am okay with that. My goal was by putting it on or sending it to college transcripts with what your rankings are, you know, the research that we found, to some extent, it was a little detrimental, but I am okay and completely on board with celebrating a valed Sal, that is the decision of the committee.
I think, Dr. Crakehead, you were up.
I'll cede my place to Ms. White.
James, I was just going to ask you if you could share what other high schools do around that issue, who don't use class rank, but how do they, how do they acknowledge the top students? Or do they, or how do they go about it?
So very good question. That was another piece of the research, reaching out to some of the schools, a number of schools have, I think as part of the presentation, I'm sorry, I don't have it here, there were a number of schools that do not issue class rank, Canton, Sharon, Newton, Needham, Natick and some of the W schools, they don't issue class rank, so sometimes they might have someone who, the purpose of the class rank in some cases was determine who was going, A, who was number one and also who was going to speak in some cases at the graduation ceremony. Some moved away to that, sometimes people were voted in, sometimes it was the valed Sal, but they only did it privately with those, the talk to. One school that I polled, they had four people who were tied for valedictorian and they had to move and had a voting system on who was to speak, but in this case, you know, sometimes, I think I said it at the last presentation, sometimes it was the class historian, sometimes it was the class president, sometimes it was a chosen alum that came back and gave a motivational speech for the class. So it varies from district to district, there are a number of schools that are eliminated. I think that was part of the research provided, it was probably more than 50, closer to 60, 65% of the schools nationwide would no longer do in class rank.
So, I feel like I have sort of like such a unique perspective on this, this conversation, having lived through watching someone become valedictorian in my house and how I felt about that. For me, the issue was never about that, it was always about the way I felt as a district, we managed that piece. And I, I spoke often and loudly to anyone who would listen to me, that I thought having those conversations with students from the time they were freshmen, in group guidance, handing them transcripts that had class rank, you know, in the four years that my son was in school here, never once did he mention it to us as a family, but the entire community did, because other people were discussing it. And that piece for me was very unsettling, because I felt like, as you and I discussed many times, that's a tiny measure of a person's self, right? So, but it meant something to him and it said something about what he wanted to achieve. So that was one thing. And we already recognize the top achieving students, whether you want to call them a valedictorian, a salutatorian, children who receive the award for being in the century club all four years are those students. Those students who receive an award at the award night for being in the century club all four years are the top students in the class. So sometimes there's 10 of them, sometimes there's eight of them, sometimes there's five of them, those are the students. We are already recognizing those students, which is fine. I've never had an issue with the whole idea of honoring, there's always going to be people who are first and second and third, that's just the way life is, you know, like, you know, we had the Wimbledon finals over the weekend, it's the way it goes, someone's, right? I know, I think honoring academic achieving is wonderful. For me, the issue was always the way as a district, we handled it. And I am extremely proud of the district now and having conversations with the students at Health and Wellness about the fact that it is no longer a part of their conversation as, as a student body. And that's wonderful, that's the first step, that's the step towards understanding that this is just a part of who you are, you're so much more than a number. That was your message to the students at graduation. So for me, I understand that there's, there's a certain something to recognizing those students, like those who spend all those years never missing a day of school, by luck or by chance or by drive, I don't know, and also we already recognize those students. So pointing out one or two, it never, that piece never bothered me, it was the approach that we took and I feel like we made enormous strides in that area and I do, I do still like to recognize all the achievements that students have in every arena at our, in our district, without putting pressure on them to be that person.
And also, can I just speak to what Ms. Gormly said about, you know, the athletic boosters night, the fame, Friends and Advocate of Music Education night, you know, those, those students are, a lot of those students are recognized for achievement, but it's not because, for many of them anyway, it's, again, it's a collaborative vote, it's a kind of like, you know, that you're the team leader on lacrosse or this, that or the other or you're the most positive or you're the, you know, clutch person, you know, different awards and names that they're given and music and, and sports, it's not, it's not based on, it's, it's the whole, it's an evaluation of the whole student in that program and what they achieve, it's not based on the fact that, you know, you're a soprano in the music program and you can hit the highest note or hold the longest thing or, I don't know, it's, it's different, the awards night and even the other, other parts of the, I mean, there's a century club is, Ms. Everhart said, and, and then there's all the other awards, but they're cumulative of like the evaluation of the students as a whole student for all their accomplishments in their journey, which involves academics and leadership and extracurricular activities and what have you. And I just feel like, all I've learned in being part of this school committee process and volunteer in school is that education is moving about the whole student and that, you know, again, we do recognize those top ones and your success in life is not because you got straight A's on everything, your success in life is, is, is the whole person that you are. You're bright, you're an achiever, your social emotional skills, you're whatever, you know, so, I don't know.
So I'm, I'll get to you in one second. I'm going to, so I think those are all excellent points. I have to say that I feel extremely strongly that it is not only entirely appropriate, but important that as an academic institution, you recognize the students formally who have succeeded and a, an important part of that recognition is giving the students the appropriate emotional bulwark so that they're, if, you know, if it happens to be by luck or by chance or by the grace of God and it's not necessarily hard work, because we've had this conversation, class rank is not, it's not about who worked the hardest, that you, you permit them to sort of not, not go down paths that you don't want them going down in, in that process, but it, it is a, it's quite an achievement to be the student who has succeeded to the greatest degree out of, you know, 250 or so students, that's no small feat and, you know, you don't, you don't want students to, to view that unhealthily, but it's, I think it's entirely worthy of recognition and, and it's something that we should recognize. And, you know, I, I agree that it's important to sort of divorce that subject from who's speaking at graduation, I think those are, that's sort of by convention and they aren't necessarily related. But for me, it was, it's, I feel as though it's very important to make that distinction and all of your points are, are well-taken and, you know, that sort of forms the general background, but those are my thoughts on it. So Member White and then Dr. Crakehead, I know you've been holding your comments, so anytime you want to stop your walk, just raise your hand.
Okay.
All right.
No, you go, go ahead Betty.
Alphabetical, I'm usually going last. You know, I just wonder if there's a way to think about, you know, and again, I'm going to echo a little bit about what everyone has said, is that so many of the students get recognized at awards night and they're up multiple times and, you know, they've done some outstanding things, but I think, I wonder if there's a way to recognize in a special way at graduation day, character and citizenship in a, in a special award, because I think about someone who might hit it on all, you know, levels, an excellent student who's, you know, worked their, worked hard and worked to their capacity, someone who has done, you know, wonderful things, has been a good citizen of Milton and of Milton High School and basically is an excellent character, if there is some sort of way to honor a combination like that, because I think that's what makes you successful in life.
And so, to your point, you kind of just described National Honor Society, which is scholarship, service to community, citizenship, so all of those things we do and even within that, I tried to, in my six-year tenure at the high school, I had the luxury of only missing two and I say the luxury because my two daughters graduated, in my speech, I tried to incorporate all of that because I do think it's a culminating academic and dignified ceremony and I think it should be recognized. And I do want to, because my statement at every one of these presentations is that it's an academic institution first and foremost. And I know sometimes we get into debate about athletics and whether or not you do it. I look at students, that's why student is before athlete, student athlete, that's why we raise the rigor and I think that the school committee should notice, we raise the bar for our student athletes, which is much higher than that of the MIAA, the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association, we raise the bar to say that we want our student athletes to be students first and foremost. So again, I will reiterate, I am open to and willing to and will accept the valed Sal at the senior awards night, but I do want to make sure that people understand that that is not the only time that we recognize our students for academic achievements. And we do that throughout the year, century club, National Honor Society, student quarter ceremonies, we do it in a wide range of different ways. As far as the athletics, I want to just clarify that, I think it's a very good point that you make, when we do the athletic night, it's not just about the MVP, it's most improved, it's team spirit, it's a wide variety and even at that award, sometimes awards are given that are repetitive throughout the, whether it be the league or the states, the conference, which all scholastics, we don't choose that, we just share that information at that night.
Okay, I'm ready, thank you for the time. I, I think I have a lot to say about this, but I'll try to, try to be brief. When Principal Jett and Ms. Cahill first brought this to us, I was very much on the side of keeping the system that we had and in recognizing academic achievement, but in that particular traditional way, the way that I grew up experiencing it. But after listening to the very persuasive arguments of Mr. Jett and Ms. Cahill, I was persuaded that getting rid of class rank was a very good thing for our students, so I voted for it. It feels like now we're being asked to take a step away from that and it feels like those arguments are in some ways maybe glossed over by this. I feel like in some ways that we're talking out of both sides of our mouth or wanting to have our cake and eat it too, whatever it might be, to keep that tradition that we're all so used to, that we don't want to send these numbers to colleges because we're saying, a student is more than just that number and yet, what we're going to do is recognize the student who is that number here in our district. I don't think that that's the appropriate thing to do, I think when we recognize who the best athletes are, those are not athletes who excel in one sport, they never are. These are athletes who do multiple sports and who are people who excel in different ways as teammates, et cetera. They're not the selfish players on the court either, I guarantee you that. So it recognizes something more than that. When we, when those students walk through in graduation, some of them have gold tassels, which means they're being recognized as members of the National Honor Society. When we have senior awards nights, my colleagues have mentioned the century club, senior awards are given generally to the students with the higher GPAs, certainly junior book awards are given to those students with higher GPAs. We recognize them over and over again. As Principal Jett pointed out earlier in one of his presentations with Ms. Cahill, the difference between a valedictorian and number 10 or number 15 could be one one-hundredth of a point and so yet, we're all convinced by that, we get rid of class rank and yet now we're going to say, okay, that one one-hundredth of a point matters and we're going to say who ends up at the top of that heap. So I feel, I respect certainly the feelings of my valuable colleague, Dr. Donahue, but I feel just as passionately and as strongly that this is not the right direction to go in. Thank you.
Thank you, that was well said. I don't know if anyone else has anything else they want to add.
So are we taking, my question is, do we take a vote?
So, yes, we will take a vote. Few other comments that I would make, I, I agree wholeheartedly that it, it does seem like, you know, we're, we're moving a little bit away from what, what we discussed the other night. My, as Member Everhart said, I had a couple concerns with how class rank was managed previously and those in conjunction with how it was utilized at the college admissions level is, is in a lot of ways what drove my vote the other night. I think that it is the right, not submitting it to the colleges is the right thing to do by our students. I would, to use your example, the, the athletics MVPs, they, you're right, they're, they're not, it's not simply the best typically one-sport athlete, it's cross multi-sports. You could say the same about the valedictorian or the salutatorian or the person who has the highest GPA, that it is not somebody who simply has excelled in the humanities or has simply excelled in, you know, the sciences, it's somebody who has excelled across the board. And you are entirely correct that we do, and as Member Everhart said, we do recognize our high achieving students multiple times, the junior book awards, the four-year members of the century club and that's important. And I think it's, I think it's equally as important to identify as an academic institution, the one or two or three or four students in, in order who have met with the greatest success and I think it's not only important And I think it's not only important because you are identifying them specifically for their achievements, but I think for those, you know, who, who are in that cohort of the award winners at the junior book aw, and, and the other members of the four-year Century Club, I think that there's an important life lesson for them as well, that these are obviously very high achieving students who are going to go off and are going to do great things and are going to expect great success of themselves. And I, I think it's, I think it's important to, to give them a little, a little hint of the fact that, you know, they may not reach the pinnacle where they go. And I think there's, there's a degree of value in that as well. So I don't know if anyone else has any other comments.
Well, I kind of feel like this is, you know, it's interesting to listen to what Dr. Donahue says and then what Dr. Pegg had said and to remember, you and I sitting here last, all this being like, "What?" You know, and remembering your reaction and my utter like, "What?" That's exactly what I think I said, actually. Yeah, I mean, it's a very emotionally charged issue for reasons that I don't quite understand. I do understand, I guess, in some ways, and to listen to what Elaine says, that you're talking out of both sides of your mouth, like it doesn't make a whole lot of sense that you're saying this thing and then you're saying that thing and what matters. And in the end, there is someone who's always, number one, whether they know it or not, I suppose, or number two, or number 10, or number 350. And I, I think probably the reason that, as a family, we never talked about it is because it wasn't something that mattered to us. That was by chance or by whatever that it came to be. But we would often talk to our children about the fact that effort is what matters and, and eventually, hopefully, your effort gets rewarded in one way or another, but that those sorts of things don't a person, as I said, make. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know that I, I don't know. I feel like I'm right back where we were last year, actually. I really do.
I'd like to make a motion to vote, because, I mean, I know how I want to vote and I think that it, we could, like you said, we could go on. It is an emotionally charged issue, but at the end of the day, I think we need to make, we need to vote on the decision of how, what we feel, whether, whether they're acknowledged at the night or they're, or they're not, you know? So I think we could, because we could go on and on, but I think many of us feel a certain way and I think we're ready to vote and we should see where we land. I don't know how the rest of you feel.
I'm perfectly comfortable moving to a vote. It seems, I, I don't, I don't want to keep putting people on the spot, but I just want to make sure that people have had a chance to articulate their thoughts and feel comfortable with this. And like I said, at the last meeting, it seemed like, like we all talked around this and I wanted to, it was important to me to have this discussion and have this vote. Member White?
Can I just ask if, if the leadership team, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but do you have a strong feeling about this or a recommendation that you would make or, and that doesn't just go to James, or that can go to the leadership team here at the table, too?
Principal Jett, your...
You know, I don't want to put James on the spot because he wanted to eliminate class rank. And so I have, I was moved, you know, so you mentioned last summer, I completely supported doing away with class rank. And then when Dr. Donahue brought it up, I said, "I was frankly very moved at awards night." I was, all due respect, I was never really moved at graduation and, you know, I think it would be amazing if all the students vote on who. I was very moved at graduation with all of those awards and I was very comfortable with number one, me, you know, because I'd never really seen that before and everybody applauding. So, you know, we can speak up about it. I understand, I total, I don't want to not help you, but I understand totally both sides of this and I'm not telling James not to speak. We brought him here to his school since last summer was to do with class rank.
Okay.
And so I asked him here tonight to, to answer any of our general questions.
I'm certainly ready to vote. I just was wanting to give you an opportunity to speak. But I did not want to put you on the spot.
I would love to hear your opinion, but I, I, I was gonna say, we can't, yeah, it's okay. I'm sorry. So, yes, so the way we're gonna, we're gonna do this, so I'm going to move to keep the designation of valedictorian, salatorian for graduating seniors with the highest and second highest GPA. So that's the motion.
What, can you repeat the motion? I'm sorry.
Keep, designation...
The designation, okay.
Valedictorian, salatorian for the graduating seniors with the highest and second highest And I'm, if somebody would like to edit that, I'm, I'm open to editing that. Dr. Craig, if you thought that changing that wording would be helpful?
No.
Okay. So it'll require four votes and it'll require a second.
A second.
This is the motion's second. Thank you. So all in favor? All opposed? All right, so that's one five. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Principal Jett.
Thanks, Mr. Jett.
Thank you, James. Next, we're going to address the application for the Wilson-Kendallin opening of their school. And to give you a history of this, the school committee was asked over a year.
Over a year, almost two years.
And we, we had our assistant superintendent and Holly Concanon, Colicott principal, Amy Gale, curriculum leader, analyze the materials and we gave feedback that we didn't think that the curriculum met the standard. And so we were given more materials and assistant superintendent Janet Sheehan brilliantly asked for Margaret Eberhart to join the group. And I'm going to turn it over to them and ask Margaret Eberhart to pick it up from the meeting that was held and all of the work that's followed up on behalf of this school committee.
So we met with Veronica, I don't recall the date, there isn't a date on this informational sheet. If you look in your packet, there's an informational sheet that she submitted regarding the process. It was in June, I just couldn't remember the date of it. And so, just in case people are wondering, why are we even doing this? We are, we are charged by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to approve the opening of any private school in a community. And it's not the, it's not the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's job, it's not the superintendent's job, it's the six of us. And they give some guidelines, how to go about doing that. So we, Dr. Donahue, I think it was Dr. Donahue, when they, it was last year they came, asked the superintendent, the assistant superintendent and the two principals or the many principals to look over the curriculum and to provide us with feedback, which they did. And then we met with Veronica. And when I sat with her, what I discussed with her is that in order for the school to get approval from the school committee, she really needs to come to the school committee with all of the required documentation that she is prepared to open the school. And that would be that she has all of her paperwork in order, so that she has a such a figure of occupancy, that she has information from the fire department, from the health department, that she has the required information with regard to, you know, looking out for the safeguards of her students in terms of background checks for her teachers, and also all of her policies and procedures that she has in place in terms of handbooks, healthcare policies, and what is her plan as she opens the school. And I said that more than, obviously, the administration is concerned about the curriculum and of course, I'm concerned about the curriculum, but from my perspective, sitting there with her that day, for me, it's that piece. The piece where in order to, I went through this process in opening an early childhood center two times. And the Department of Early Education provides you with a wonderful process to do it and then they come and they sit with you. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education expects the six of us, ordinary citizens to say, "Sure, go ahead, open that school." So I, that's what I said to Veronica, I said, "You need to have all of those, all that in order and ensure that you are, that you have a good sense of what this is going to look like." We asked, and, but there's, it's not clear as to what happens, right, in the process? So we consulted with the legal team and as you saw, he forwarded us the answer about that it solely resides with us. So I talked to Dr. Donahue before the meeting started, and this is what I think we should do. I know this has been a process over a year. I've been the one sort of pushing it forward when I saw the signs in town and I felt that, "Why are those signs up?" I feel that we need to tell the board of the Wilson-Kilidin School, Kindallin School, that they, by the August 15th meeting, they need to provide us with all of the documentation. If by the August 15th meeting, they are not able to produce that documentation, then we will have to vote on that. They need our vote of approval to open their school. If they open the school without a vote of approval, I do not know under which purview they are operating. So they have a board, they have a wonderful desire to open a school, I fully support that, having been in that role, but they are charged to do what they need to do to prove they are ready. And my recommendation to the school committee is that we, we, we direct them that at the August meeting, they need to produce all of this paperwork in order for us to take a vote. And if they cannot, then we will vote to not grant approval and then they can restart the process over again in the future. I think that gives them ample time. A year and several months is ample time to produce them. And they're working very hard. You know, she came to the meeting and, you know, it's not easy to open a school and I totally recognize that and it's her dream, it's their dream, I recognize that, too. But it is their responsibility to produce the required documents in order for us to make an informed decision.
Dr. Craig.
I'm, I'm sure that you did this, but I just want to clarify that you gave her a detailed list of all of the documentation that she needs to provide to us.
Yeah, it's all right here. It's right here under physical, public, physical, physical plant safety, all of those certificates of occupancy, underschool staff, the quarry information, the I9s and all of that information. And then she gave us a plan here about her records and things like that.
Right. I mean, she filled this out, correct?
She did, right.
So what I just want to clarify is that, that the answers that are here are not adequate to what we need.
Correct. We need to actually see that.
And she's aware of that.
Well, so what we're going to do after this evening, if you all agree that that's a good plan, we will contact the board and Veronica in particular, and we will say, "These are, these are the things." And if assistant superintendent Sheehan wants something or needs something else for the, for the educational piece, she, she can produce that as well, although she gave us that huge binder. And we went over it with Principal Concanon and Assistant Principal Deroche. So I think that that would be a great way for them to get the ball, either to get the approval or to recognize that that will not be happening by September and to make an adequate plan for themselves as an organization.
I think that sounds like a wonderful idea. I think it'll add a degree of clarity to the process because, you know, 18 months ago or 20 months ago, whenever we went through this, we sort of hit, hit this point in the process and it kind of petered out. So it's, I think it's important that we bring it to a conclusion and then move forward from there. So, and I think a month's time is, is adequate to, you know, either they have these things in reasonable form or, or not.
Right. And if they're gonna open, going to open in September, they have to have these things.
In six weeks.
Right? Yeah, so, like I said, we, we, I fully support people who are pursuing a dream, especially one associated with education, but if we're charged with, you know, determining whether it's a safe and adequate facility for children and families, well, then that's, that's a pretty big responsibility.
Assistant superintendent Sheehan.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that the guidelines for school committees to approve a private school are posted on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education website. So they've been there all along. And so initially, when we only received information on one of the 11 criteria, we, we just received the information on curriculum. So it's only recently that we were provided some information on the other criteria. And while the guidelines are just that, it's, it's not required that school committees follow them, it's a, it's a very good guide, I think. And so we, we left that meeting saying that that's, that's what we were following or recommending. And I would also like to add that Member Eberhart, because of her experience in opening schools, really offered a lot of good information. So I think that, you know, it was also a very supportive, I think, and helpful meeting in what was required.
You all did a lot of work and, you know, Principal Concanon and Deroche and then previously Amy Gale spent a lot of time working with this community. And so we're trying to put our best foot forward as a community, support the initiative of someone else. And now it's really a determination if they're ready to do the, what's required.
Great. Well, thank you for, for spearheading this from our perspective. It's been very helpful.
Thank you. You're welcome. Yeah.
All right.
And briefly?
Briefly.
I know the night is long. I want to remind the parents who are viewing to go to their school's website on summer reading. I want to remind the viewing public that we have a school committee policy, families moving from fifth to sixth grade, eighth to ninth grade to re-register. If you would go on our website, we have days that we open at seven in the morning, we have nights that we're here till eight to facilitate that re-registration residency process. I want to tell you that I have, I tell the school committee in emails, we have a thousand children in different programs this summer and those directors of those programs and those teachers and the support staff, I have to tell you, from the traffic to what's going on in those classrooms, to the special ed services, to the transition program, to middle and high school, it's flourishing here. It's truly amazing. We're going to have assistant superintendent Sheehan report out at our next meeting about all the professional development that's going on this summer with our teachers and staff. A reminder for elementary parents and guardians, those assignments of homeroom teachers don't go out until before Labor Day and they will be mailed. We, two special notes. Dr. Pavlicek asked to speak tonight under happenings. So if the night is late, we're going to blame Dr. Pavlicek. Would you share about a very, very important aspect? In fact, it can bring school systems down if it's not done efficiently and effectively and that's transportation. And so will you speak to what you've put so much time into, transportation?
We'll start with an apology. The person who usually does our transportation has been out for a couple of weeks and so we've been catching up. But for people who have, again, bus transportation is available for students in grades K through six who live more than two miles away from school. Anyone other than those students, whether they're within two miles or grade seven or up, we have a bus fee for. Those people who have sent in an email to bus@miltonps.org asking to be put on the bus and who have paid their fee if fee was appropriate for them, have been placed on buses. What hasn't happened necessarily is we haven't gotten out confirmation emails to everybody yet because we're going through catching up on all these things. But if you've sent in and, and you've signed up for a bus, we've, we've put you on a bus. What's going to happen now, that was due in by June 30th. What we are doing now is we're going to go through and look at the bus routes. We may have to do a little manipulation to, you know, alter the routes a little bit because of people who live in particular places on the routes and we have to move stops and change things around and we may have to, if some bus is overcrowded and nearby bus is not, we might have to do a little tweaking on that. So we're going to be doing that for the next couple of weeks as just massaging the bus routes. At that point, anyone else who has sent in an email saying they'd like to be on the buses, we will fill those spots on a space available basis. I mean, June 30th was the deadline to get in and be guaranteed a spot. We will have all those people in, in fact, we've extended it. Anyone who hesitated by now actually had been placed on a bus. So people who register for buses after now will, as I say, will fill on a space available basis. We will get bus passes out in mid-August to people. We will be posting the routes, which will probably look fairly similar to last year's routes, but some stops may be moved to accommodate, as I say, either the number of students at the stop or students who live at places which really don't suit, aren't suited well by an existing stop. We have to take care of students who live on busy roads without sidewalks and... We have to take care of students who live on busy roads without sidewalks and things like that. Those are particularly problematic for buses. So, we're working on it. And as I say, I apologize if people were expecting an email confirmation, or everyone will get around to that, but we will get, we are working on it. And anyone who has any questions can, you know, feel free either to email bus@miltonps.org or me directly, and we'll get you your answer back.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your hard work. I'm sure it was partly enjoyable knowing you were here. But mostly not.
And a closing, I just ask Member White to briefly report on the meeting that we had with the Rotary this morning.
Sure. This morning, Dr. Pavlicek and Superintendent Gormly and I met with Mike Mahalcheck, who is a resident of Milton, lives over near Milton. His kids went through the schools here. He's become the new president of the Milton Rotary, and in that role, he's reaching out to different community members to discuss how the Rotary can be of service and help. And so he came up to speak with us this morning, and I think that the Rotary has prioritized their interest in serving, to help with the Milton Substance Abuse Coalition. He also was educated this morning a little bit about possibly having Rotary members be mentors up at the high school, and helping out with the all-night graduation party as well. So, he is trying to expand the membership of the Rotary, because it's, as many other civic organizations, they're dealing with shrinking enrollment, so he's going to do some outreach to the community to try to get more people involved in the Rotary. And unfortunately, I left the spelling of his name and his email address at home, but maybe Mrs. Gormly, you can put that in the next email blast. And so he's like recruiting for people to get involved in the Rotary, as well as wanting to help the public schools with different needs that they have. So it was a nice meeting.
That does a lot of nice work.
Well, I hope he gets a nice membership bump from your email blast.
He got a membership bump today. I personally joined.
Yay!
Personally.
That's great.
Well, thank you, Superintendent. All right. Chairs report. So the first item is our retreat. We had a wonderful retreat yesterday. I thought it was extremely productive. We have our, our sort of broad goals for the next year or beyond. They're going to be finalized over the next few weeks. I plan to have those that are not dependent on MCAS results and other forces beyond our control ready for the next meeting. So hopefully we'll be able to vote on some of them then. One of the things that we talked about was our facilities goal. The crux of it is moving along our space issue. So, to that point, tonight, I'm going to, I'm going to move that we authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Finance to put out a RFP, Request for Proposal, to evaluate short-term and intermediate to long-term facilities solutions to our problem, the cost of which will not exceed $60,000.
A second.
And as we talked about with our forum tonight, this will permit us to get some professional insight, hopefully, into some of the solutions we've discussed, and maybe they'll come up with something we haven't thought of. So all those in favor of authorizing, Assistant Superintendent? Opposed? Unanimous? Excellent. Thank you. And before we leave that subject, if you are interested in working on our school committee goal about structuring our meetings, et cetera, please email me, so I can put that task force together. All right. So the 2018, 2019 subcommittees and advisory committees, you should have a draft in front of you with the chairs indicated. I'd like to thank our former chairs and our new chairs. The only blank that I had was our MFE representative. I couldn't remember who volunteered. Thank you, Dr. Donahue.
I was not volunteering. I was saying, you actually have two empty spots, because last meeting, or the June 13th meeting, if that was our last meeting.
Yes.
I said that I was no longer on the Town School Consolidation Committee.
Oh, yes, you did say that. That is correct. So, the Town School Consolidation Committee is vacant, and the MFE representative is vacant.
No.
So, I will communicate with the selectmen about rejuvenating the Town School Consolidation Committee, and once that is rejuvenated, we will solicit a volunteer.
Right. So, Dr. Donahue, I'm, so as we discussed at the retreat yesterday, you know, this would be an interesting committee to be involved in, but it all depends on when they decide to meet.
Yep.
So perhaps you could relay that meeting to those that are in charge. Eleven in the morning doesn't work for people who work outside.
I will communicate that. So, all in favor of the updated?
I think the, I believe I was drafted to be the representative for the Milton Foundation for Education.
Okay.
And I accept the draft.
And I'm not on health and wellness anymore, unfortunately.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Well, so thank you.
It's the way it is.
And security, I think I volunteered.
Did you volunteer for that? So with those edits, all in favor of the new advisory committee subcommittee and delegated responsibilities list? Security. Favor is the vote.
Yep.
And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. School committee calendar. These are our projected meetings for the next year. Please take it home. If you see any conflicts, let me know.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So, thank you to all of you who work on putting this together and trying to fit everything in. It's, I don't know, it's wild. But I, so I'm just like kind of glancing at it, and I know, I know there's no good solution to this, but I know, like, there are numerous meetings where there are two site council presentations, and the diversity report on the night of a site council presentation. And I don't know, like, I think we've had this conversation before, that despite the best efforts to keep those things short, as we discussed yesterday at the retreat, you can, you know, it's hard to tell people, you have ten minutes to tell us all the wonderful things that you do. I don't know. It's just, I know that those meetings tend to be a little bit full. And sometimes I feel like, I don't know, they can, to give people the attention they deserve, I don't know.
Per, per, Member Rosmarie.
And I also, in looking at this too, based on our discussion of if, you know, we have the two September meetings, two October meetings, et cetera, to November, if we're going to this year, possibly, you know, move those meetings to a school site. I think part of what Member White recommended, and that many of us, I think, were in support of discussing and changing, is that at those meetings, especially that, that we might change some of the meetings to be more of a give-and-take forum. I mean, beyond just, and the facilities is going to be this forefront issue, but also maybe, you know, that if we had a meeting at, I think it would make sense if we had a meeting at, like, if September, we have, I don't know, or October, the Calicut Site Council, that maybe that meeting would be at Calicut. And I don't know, like, we do the site council report, but I, but if those second meetings of the month, if we're going to change that structure, I think we have to take that into account of what's going to be on the agenda if that changes. I mean, do you know what I'm saying? This is still pretty put-together standard of how it's going to be. So I think, I think if we're going to look at, that we have one meeting that is kind of formal about voting on things, and a more of a task-oriented meeting, and then one, not that we can't do some things, but that a portion of that meeting needs to be more of a forum-like discussion amongst the parents. I don't know, just something to think about before we say this is set in stone.
Dr. Cregan, did you?
Yeah, just to respond a little bit to that, my concern is that, as Ms. Eberhart says, it already looks very full. So, if we move to that format, which I actually like the idea of, in which Ms. White raised at our retreat yesterday, then that means that the ones that are not the sort of more open forum ones are going to be even more packed with stuff, because we're going to have to move it to a different time. So I think we're, we're running up against a potential logistical issue here.
And I think the history of the site councils was, I thought you were going to, as a finance person, that you wanted to get the site councils in here. We're not married to that, because it's more than just a budget. They present, you know, you could brainstorm that, they come and do the budget aspect, and then through the year, because I have to tell you, on behalf of the principals, they barely get to know their site council members when we're asking them to come here. Maybe we don't decide this tonight, and do a presentation. So on behalf of the district, if you ask for budget input from the site councils, that could be a very, that could be a short meeting, that could be each of them reporting out their longer fifteen-minute site councils. They find it very hard to do that in the fall. But they responded to what the school committee had asked. We want to get you all in here to hear what the site council wants in the way of budget. Some of them have only met once.
Right.
So, that's something to think about.
Right. We do need to hear the budget requests, you know, as we're putting the budget together before we finalize it. So, there's no moving those, but your suggestion is a good one. Maybe we could just make it about the budget, or have other, but then, of course, then we're moving other presentations from site councils about other items into the spring, and we're loading up those meetings as well. So, I'm not sure there's a, there's a great answer to this.
Member Rosmarie.
Well, so just pow-wow-ing in my head when you said that, I mean, I do, I mean, I do, I think we all liked what Member White mentioned, because of the experience that we had at the end of the year, and even tonight. I think that there are, there's going to be, we have potential for great success and making great strides, to have multiple forums throughout the year with our parent base like this. And I don't know if maybe, I don't know, instead of, I mean, if we, if we have all these things to cover, I mean, but I echo Margaret, though, like, you don't want to have two site councils in a night. I mean, November 7th to do the Glover Site Council, the Pierce Site Council, and the strategic plan. Oof. Right? Like, you know, I, I, I kind of like, I remember, I mean, I think, again, we want to commend Dr. Donahue, that he's done an excellent job of time this year, so different in the four years I've been on. So the scheduling has greatly improved with that, but I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I mean, I guess we have to have the site council report to us. I mean, we do, we want that, but, I don't know. I, I think that, I think, I think it, we all feel that, I guess we need some, we need most of this stuff, but at the same time, I think even tonight with the questions that have been proposed, like, there's a major disconnect between the parent community and us, and sort of them giving feedback to us, questioning, they don't understand how we run, how we operate, what we cover, and there's a need for that to, I think of communication rebuilding. So, I mean, that's, it's actually more time on us, but I don't know if we could have, if we have to have standard school committee meetings, and look at this again time-wise, condense it, I don't know. And do we have, do we choose, do we choose four forum, four additional forums at the schools, and maybe do, and at those forums, plan to give the updates on facilities, and then if we're at Calicut, have the Calicut issues that night, for them to back and forth, and Pierce, and Tucker, I don't know, something like that.
Member Rosemarie.
Well, I think we had agreed to have a subcommittee think about the forums, and how we might rework our school committee efforts and meetings. So I think we should let that take its course in that regard, and make recommendations back to us, rather than trying to figure it out all now. But I, but I also think that Superintendent Gormly's suggestion that perhaps separating the site council presentations from the school budget recommendations, which would then possibly allow the site councils to spread their reports to us over the course of the year. When I look at the second half of the year, these are, these agendas are quite open, and there's room in them to have site councils presenting, and like January on. And it would give us, do, is it mostly the principals who do the budget recommendations? Superintendent Gormly, is that?
Well, no. One of the legal responsibilities of a site council is to review the budget. So to all different degrees, the site councils are involved in the principal reports to the site council, when you send a message down, what do you want to ask for? What kind of staffing do you want? So you wouldn't find many site councils who wouldn't know, when I ask for all the principals to come forward with their recommendations, they report out to their site councils, and they know what positions they're asking for, they know, they know what the needs are.
Good. But still, the principal could represent that briefly, more briefly than doing a whole site council presentation about everything else that's happening at their schools, if we wanted to separate those, just in terms of school committee presentations. Is that right?
Yes.
Dr. Cregan.
If we're just talking about separating the budget requests from the site council reports, couldn't the budget requests be presented to the finance subcommittee directly, rather than in this forum? And then we could spread the other stuff out. I mean, finance needs to know what the requests are, in order to put the budget together. We could have a night where Finance, or Glenn, Assistant Superintendent Pavlicek, reports out about what the budget requests are, or something like that, in a not-too-long presentation. But then, then, as Ms. Rosemarie said, we could spread all the site council reports out, and so the budgetary stuff would be taken care of in the fall as it needed to be.
I think those are great suggestions.
Yeah, you too.
Wonderful. And, you know, the administration and the finance subcommittee does a very good job of collating the budgetary requests and demands, and ranking them, and, you know, we typically have a robust conversation about, why is this third, and why is this, you know, second, and, you know, why is this the bottom of the list and top? So, so I think that could work out very well. Your, the idea about us having the site council discussion at the individual schools is a tremendous idea.
Makes sense, yeah.
You know, again, we don't have to all fade this off here, but whoever ends up on the little task force that manages this, you know, I think one of the things that we will have to recognize is that, you know, some of our committee reports, and some committee reports may well have to be more brief, maybe there are ones that are better included with, at those individual meetings, health and wellness, transportation, you know, those would seem to be of interest at those times, and maybe we can sort of batch some of our finance discussions, if we're at a point in the year where that's not, you know, particularly syphilis.
Sure. Yeah. Happy foregoing.
Member Rosemarie.
I would just say that if we move to that, having the principals and perhaps site councils go just to finance committee to make the requests, which I think is a real efficiency there, being someone who's not on finance, it would put the onus on you and the finance committee to communicate that thoroughly to us.
It would, yeah.
Because I would not know otherwise. My other question, too, is, a strategic plan is, just sort of shows up in here and kind of... and kind of occasionally on, on the calendar, and I just don't know exactly why, and it's, I mean, the subcommittees to report, um, part of the calendar is blank. So, it seems to me like, just for now, I, the Strategic Planning Committee is, plans to meet quarterly this year, so I'm not exactly sure that these align with when we're gonna be meeting, and, and whether that makes sense. So, I'm, I'm not quite sure, I, I would be inclined to put those under subcommittees to report, um, once we figure that out.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sure those are in, uh, inserted as, I think, quarterly markers, so, um, we'll slide that over to some committee.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll, I'll check with the committee about, in time, we have to set our schedule for the year.
So, can I ask another question, then?
Yes.
If, to what Member Rosemarin said, that we need to, if we need to meet, like, we're going to meet, hopefully, like, we, I think we've mentioned, in August to determine those changes to our school committee meetings, do we at least just keep the dates in place? I mean, I, I know-
Well, that's what they're-
Yeah, we said, but we have the dates, but, but like, so if we have, like, the November seventh, um, in place, but we're not now, we don't have Glover, we don't have Pierce, we don't have whatever, maybe, you know, for this site council, 'cause we're going to, in the fall, 'cause we're going to handle it in finance, which I, again, agree is a good idea, I, I think that, I guess, I guess my disconnect or what I'm not comprehending is, I think that we need to figure out what those meetings are going to be, I mean, the structure of when we're going to have a meeting here, and then a, a site meeting, um, and then what we're gonna cover in those site meetings before. But we can agree on the dates, but I really don't think we can agree on what's gonna be discussed until we figure out how we want, we agree on that forum, like, which date is which.
Format.
Am I right?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, keep the dates, and, and some of the stuff, you know, we can come back to and say, like, in January, the FY nineteen budget and all, but I think until we figure out, and now that we made that decision to not have those com- the, the, like, the November seventh meeting, we don't have strategic now, we don't have FPS, we don't have Glover, you know, we can figure out, well, how, how do we handle those two November dates? And how do we handle the two October dates, or whatever, I don't know.
Great. So, one thought I had, too, is I just wanna share that when I was on the War Committee years ago, um, we used to start our meetings at seven thirty, and they would go to eleven thirty some nights, and, you know, you were having a hard time keeping yourself awake. So, particularly during the budget crunch time, when all the department heads were coming in, I had suggested that we try to start meeting at seven instead of seven thirty, and that worked for the majority of people. So, I just wanted food for thought, and a just an idea, you can think about your schedules as to whether or not, on the nights that look like we're gonna be, you know, in doing a forum, format, whether we have any flexibility to start at six thirty that night, just to give us a little extra time to get everything done. And I, again, I know I can do that, but I don't know that everybody else can do that, 'cause I know everyone has different work commitments and family commitments and stuff, but just, just something to think about.
That's a good recommendation.
Excellent. All right. So, if you wanna figure all this out, and tell us how to do this, uh, shoot me an email. All right. So, let's see, um, executive session actions. So, at our, our last meeting, perhaps, in our last meeting, we met in executive session to discuss, um, salary adjustments. We voted on, uh, salary adjustments for the assistant superintendents for fiscal year nineteen and fiscal year twenty of two point seven five percent, based on, uh, performance, uh, data. Uh, we voted on, uh, salary adjustments for the principals for fiscal year nineteen and fiscal year twenty of two point seven five percent, uh, based on performance, uh, reviews and performance data. We voted on, uh, an adjustment for the superintendent for fiscal year eighteen of two point five percent, based on performance data. And we voted a two percent increase for our, uh, non-unionized personnel for fiscal year nineteen, uh, which is in keeping with their, uh, unionized colleagues and our, um, past practice. All right. So, finance subcommittee.
Finance has met twice since our last, um, school committee meeting. Um, we had some very robust discussions. A lot of time was spent, um, looking at, um, the reduction of fees, um, for extracurricular activities and how that has impacted the budget. Um, and those fee reductions happened both at the high school and at the middle school for, um, athletics. I think there are three at the middle school across country, and help me here-
Basketball.
Basketball.
And spring, uh, tr- another track team.
Oh, okay, great.
Track teams and basketball.
Um, so, those fee reductions have, you know, reduced the, um, amount, obviously, that's coming in, so we spent some time, um, talking about that, uh, and the budgetary implications of that, uh, sp- especially with athletics. Um, another thing, uh, that we're looking at is, uh, we're getting to, we're readying for, uh, to look at the end-of-year report, which will be handed to us in Au- late July, August? No, September.
The end-of-year report for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is due at the end of September.
Okay, all right. Um, so, we're looking at some, you know, final, uh, numbers coming through there before, ahead of the actual report, um, being submitted. Um, we were looking at spending in various, uh, funds, or general fund, revolving fund, et cetera. Um, Superintendent Gormley, um, met, uh, with Town Hall, in terms of brainstorming solutions, um, about the issue that I spoke about on June, um, thirteenth, about a personnel issue, uh, so, we're on top of that as well. So, uh, that's what finance, uh, has done. And I am going to make, um, an omnibus motion to approve four, uh, vendor warrants at the same time. So, I would like to make a motion to approve vendor warrant fifty-one dated June twenty-first, twenty eighteen, in the amount of two hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and forty-nine cents. Vendor warrant number fifty-two dated June twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, in the amount of eight hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. A vendor warrant number fifty-three dated, uh, June twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, in the amount of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and four dollars and three cents. And vendor warrant number fifty-four dated, uh, June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, in the amount of seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eight cents. A second. Okay. Um, all right, all in favor? That's five, and anyone abstaining, that would be one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So, um, policy subcommittee.
So, before you, you have the policy we approved last, in the fall, no, yeah, in the fall, no, in the summer of last year, um, policy JRB, the directory information policy. Um, Dr. Pavlichek was reviewing, as we go through the handbooks and we look at, we've been doing that process, uh, throughout this, um, late spring and early summer, we noticed the discrepancy in the fact that in our directory of policy, information policy, the email address was not there. And, um, Dr. Pavlichek and I and Charlene Roche went back and forth and back and forth through all of our, um, notes and emails, and even, I had notes about conversations you and I had at the school committee meeting about email address, and, um, it was in there, then it was out of there. But it needs to be in there, because it's part of the public record, um, and it's in the handbook saying that it's part of the record. And so, it needs to go back in there. It was just a matter of the policy went back and forth between the lo- lawyer several times, and in the final version, the email address had been eliminated, and so, we thought, oh, okay, so, that was eliminated by the, by the powers that be, but actually, it was just a different anyway. I apologize for that confusion. Even Dr. Craighead had said last year in my notes, it, why isn't it in there? And we're like, well, that's the way it came back. So, we're going to make an expediated approval of this, since we already approved it, to just include email, since it's a public record, and it makes it a more complete and accurate policy.
Where, where's the email?
So, so, here is the policy we approved, and then the redlined one, go get the one, there's two of them, I always have. Right here.
So, um-
I apologize.
Formerly, um, the, so Superintendent Gormley, do you agree that we should use our expedited policy approval process?
Absolutely.
Sorry.
And so do I, and, and the chair of the, uh, policy subcommittee, so.
Can I ask you a question, though, on this, when I look at it? It says directory information for Milton Public Schools is defined as well. So, do you mean this is all the information that we have on the students?
Correct.
Their, their weight, that, so from the, you like, the BMI, the weight, the weight and height of members of athletic teams, that's the BMI report from the nurse's office?
No. Uh-uh. No, just information, like, you know, they have football team, basketball team. Dr. Pavlichek has something to say about this.
This is from, from FERPA.
Family.
The language is directly from the FERPA law.
Okay.
Yeah.
Weight and height of athletic teams is, so you can provide it to scouts for colleges, is the reason it's in there. So, these are, um, this is literally just lifted from the law. What happened last year is we had a, a revision to put email addresses in to reflect for modern times. Um, and then inadvertently, when we sent to the lawyer for comment, we sent the old version instead of the new version, so when it came back from the lawyer, saying, oh, this is fine, we said, oh, she wants email addresses out, but actually, she just saw the one, put it in. And just, things crossed in the mail, basically. So, you ended up voting last year the policy you already had, even though the su- the subcommittee had voted to change it. So, it was, you know, we didn't catch it until we actually put all this stuff together to review the handbooks this year, et cetera. Whoops.
And my other, my other question is, ma- it's like a college thing, major field of study. You're a high school student, but you're not like a psych major in high school.
It's from FERPA.
It's from FERPA.
It's bizarre to me. A, you don't need to know anybody's weight personally, and B, just makes you, you're not like a math major in high school, you're in high school.
If you're a football player, they wanna know.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I, I wouldn't say, like, you can't, so, and one other question, can you not play a sport unless you get weighed in?
There are some sports.
No, that's malarkey.
Wrestling?
Wrestling.
Wrestling?
I know, I know wrestling, that, but everyone knows wrestling, that you have to, because that's whatever, but do you have to know how much you weigh to play field hockey? Do you have to know how much you have to weigh to beat second doubles on the tennis team?
No idea.
I don't dig that, but that's just my own personal-
I'm with you.
I don't think that's right, but, anyway. Okay.
So, anyway. Here we are, okay.
The FERPA applies to school committee members, we're all in.
I mean, email address, email address makes sense, a couple, the other ones, not so much, but, okay.
It's ridiculous.
So, we have a, a motion-
It's a motion to-
Seconded.
Yeah.
All in favor? Unanimous.
All right.
Wonderful.
Sorry about the confusion, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pavlichek.
For your attention to detail.
Okay, I guess, I mean, it was the adding of the email address.
Approval of minutes, so you have the minutes for June thirteenth and June sixth. These were provided to you earlier today. If anybody would like additional time, I'm happy to defer approving them. Otherwise, I'm going to make an omnibus motion.
Well, there's a, I just wanna make a correction on the, on the sixth-
Thank you.
Uh, under health and wellness, it should be Ms. Eberhart reported about the health and wellness conference, rather than me.
So, that is accepted as a friendly amendment.
Yeah.
On the sixth. So, with that amendment, um, I move approval of the minutes of, are meeting from June sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and June thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Um, old businessness and citizen speak topic response, we don't have. Given the hour, if you have, um, items for the next meeting agenda, please email them to the superintendent or myself. And there's nobody here for citizen speak, so I'm going to move that we adjourn into executive session, not to return to executive session, you know, for the purpose of approval of executive session minutes. We will call vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
Wonderful. Member White?
Yes.
Member Rosemarin?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Member Eberhart?
Yes.
And Member Verella?
Yes.
Dr. Donahue, yes. We are adjourned to executive session. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.